In the council chamber and all those watching online to this meeting of the Health Scrutiny Committee for Lincolnshire. For those of us in the chamber, if there is a fire alarm, we need to leave the council chamber through the rear doors, through reception and assemble in the car park at the front of the building and await further instructions. I would also request all members to place their phones on silent and to ensure everyone has the opportunity to ask a question. Please ask a maximum of two questions per item and to keep these succinct and concise. I would like to remind you all that your comments will remain accessible online. I'd now like to move into the agenda. Agenda item one, apology for absence and replacement members. Jess.
Thank you, Chairman. We've received apologies from councillor Chris Burke, Lucille Hakes, Charmaine Morgan and Sarah Parkin.
Thank you. I'll now move on to agenda item two, declarations of members' interests. This is an opportunity for members of the committee to declare any pecuniary or other interest. Do members have any interests to declare? Councillor Kendrick, please.
Yes, thank you, Chairman. My usual declaration, I'm a stakeholder governor of LPFT.
Okay, thank you very much. In which case, we'll now move on to agenda item three, the minutes of the meeting from January the 29th. This is to confirm these minutes and they are to be found on pages three to 11 of the agenda pack. And as everyone's had the opportunity to read this, I plan on taking these on block. Do I have a proposal for these, please? Councillor Lynda Woodton, seconded councillor Cleaver. All those in favour, please show. Thank you, that's supported. Any against? Any abstentions? No, thank you very much. We'll now move on to agenda item four, the chairman's announcements. My announcements for January were included in this agenda in error. And so this month's announcements were circulated once again on the 13th of February. And my supplementary announcements were circulated on the 18th of February. Does anyone have any questions or statements? We can pick up anything in the work programme later as well. Councillor Smith.
Thank you, Chairman. My first point is I'd just like to take this opportunity to wish Pete Bennett the very best in his new role. He's been here a number of times and on occasions did get quite grilling from us on a few matters. But he was always very understanding and good natured, always ably assisted us in everything we did. So just to wish him the very best in his new role. And secondly, Chairman, I note in your supplementary announcements, you go into some detail about what the East Midlands Intermediate Care Scheme provide. It would be, if the committee are mine, I would personally think it'd be quite useful to have some further information or presentation from them because it's something I've never heard of before. And I think it'd be very useful for us to know a bit more so that we can, along with the other facilities, make our residents aware that this is there for them to use should they need to in those very dire circumstances.
Yeah, thank you, Councillor Smith. We'll pick that up on the work programme later. And obviously for this term, it will fall into the new committee where whoever is here at that point. We'll now move on to, do I have a councillor back in some sort of...
Have I imagined it or was there an update on the Humbers Services Review?
That was the last time, yeah, there is an additional in the chairman's additional announcements as well.
Yeah.
Yeah, did you?
Well, I was concerned about that. Somebody I know from Louth was sent to Grimsby with a heart attack on the Friday afternoon and she wasn't seen by a consultant until Monday morning. If she'd gone to Lincoln, it would have been a very different matter. And I'm concerned that we are not getting the same level of, it just depends where you go to the hospital. And I don't think that's fair on our, I think people in Lincolnshire ought to get a comparable service. And it does concern me. So if we can have any updates, that was in the heart department. Any updates would be very welcome because, you know, that costs the health service a lot more money to keep people in hospital for a lot longer.
Thank you. Simon, would you like to come in?
On the, on the basic question, we've not heard anything from the Secretary of State on the requests for intervention over the Hummer acute services review. My colleague in North Lincolnshire says that the six week gap is expiring. Sorry, the six weeks that he was told he would learn something expires on Friday, the 21st. So I'm sure he'll be chasing them up. That's the way they say, we'll let you know in six weeks' time. And then they'll say it's pending, we'll let you know in another six weeks. On the broader issue of services at, in Northern Lincolnshire and Goul, I mean, we tend not to have them at this committee. Although in previous years, but not every year, the committee has looked at their quality account. The working group set up by the committee has looked at their quality account. Just off the top of my head and without thinking about it, I don't know whether that's a particular avenue you might wish to follow. Next month, I'll be bringing a paper to the committee inviting members of the committee to join working groups on the quality account process. But I don't know, perhaps I need to give that one a bit more thought. Thank you, Chairman.
Well, it is pretty important to the people living in the northern part of East Lindsay. We, I do think we struggle. So anything that you can bring that makes, that we can help move things on would be gratefully received. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. What we'll do is we'll pick it up and we'll look at it at agenda setting and see whether or not there's a potential item that we could bring to the new committee after the election. So, but I do think there's a merit in what you're saying that certainly we need to. The reason I think why we haven't before is it's something that's looked at by North Easts. Yeah, but it's certainly, as you say, affecting plenty of people along the coast, certainly and in the Louth area. So, yeah, I think it's worthwhile. So we'll pick that up. Thank you. Okay, anything else on my announcements? No, do I have a proposal to note those, please? Thank you, councillor Lynda Woodton, seconded councillor Smith. All those in favour, please show. Thank you, that's supported. In which case, we'll now move on to agenda item five, NHS dental services. This item was circulated as part of the agenda pack on pages 19 to 30. As the committee is aware, we receive regular updates on NHS dental services in Lincolnshire with our last update on the 17th of April 2024. I'd like to welcome our presenters in person. Sandra Williamson, Director of Health, Inequalities and Regional Collaboration for NHS Lincolnshire's Integrated Care Board. Sarah Starbuck, Head of Primary Care Commissioning and Development for the NHS Lincolnshire Integrated Care Board. Vanessa Hales, sorry, I should have put my glasses back on in fact. Vanessa Hales, Head of Primary Care for East Midlands Primary Care Team. Kenny Hume, Chair of the Lincolnshire Local Dental Committee. Lucy Gavins, Consultant in Public Health for Lincolnshire County Council. And our presenters online, Francesca Barnes, Commissioning Manager for East Midlands Primary Care Team. Anna Ireland, Consultant in Dental Public Health for East Midlands Primary Care Team. If you'd like to present the report in about 10 minutes or so and we'll take questions at the end. Thank you.
Thank, thank you. And also just to say good morning, everyone, and thank you so much for inviting us today to give an update. As you say, we've, we've come a few times now to give you an update on the dental. So part of today's paper will be updating you on the work that we've been doing since the last meeting to both improve access in dental services and also progress the implementation of our dental strategy. It is worth noting for today's meeting, we have only just received the operational planning guidance from NHS England. And the ICB will be working collectively with East Midlands ICB to develop the plans. We have two sessions planned by the end of March. Some of you will be aware that part of that planning guidance does include the 700,000 extra urgent dental appointments. And we'll also be looking at future commissioning. So today, we probably don't have that level of detail for you. But we would be happy to update post today's meeting on the specific plans for 25, 26 by sharing a headline action plan and any plan on the page. We'll also be happy to provide any further updates probably in September in terms of how then plans are progressing. So that's by way of intro. I'm going to hand over to Vanessa and to the team for the update for the paper. Thank you.
Good morning. My name's Vanessa Hales, Head of Primary Care Services in the East Midlands. I'm going to take the papers read, but there are some points that I want to highlight. And the points that I wish to highlight in the paper are additional access and improved patient outcomes. So first of all, the new patient premium, the national scheme. In November, the number of UDAs delivered through this scheme in Lincolnshire was circa 35,000, which equates to approximately 5,000 patients. To date, the figure is circa 43,000 UDAs. The next point that I wanted to highlight was the dental recruitment scheme, also known as the Golden Hallows. The national scheme provided four applications, but due to the additional expressions of interest received in Lincolnshire, Lincolnshire have batched and locally funded the scheme to provide an additional seven places, taking this to 11 Golden Hallows to support workforce development. It is worthy of note that Lincolnshire did have the second lowest expression of interest submitted, but we have the fewest number of practices in the ICB compared to other areas. When we've undertaken the calculations, it showed that Lincolnshire had the second highest percentage of applications at 17%. And we have been able to allocate funds to all 11 applications, which is fantastic compared to other areas who are only able to award four. The next point to highlight is 110% overperformance, which is additional funding for access to urgent and routine care targeting new patients within priority groups. We had five expressions of interest, two successful applicants, which has led to an additional circa 5,000 UDA approved until the 31st of March 2025. Community dental service support to practices. And I'll look to my colleague Kenny, just to give the headlines, please, of what CDS means.
So community dental services essentially look after children with special needs, the hard-to-get population, if you like. It's, it's a great service in Lincolnshire. We're very lucky to have this service. The team is excellent. I really mean they're, they're an excellent group of people. And they support primary care, they support primary care dentistry. So the, I think there's seven sites in Lincolnshire that they operate from. Their main site obviously is Lincoln. But it is a service that is in, in demand. They are, we've managed to recruit a new member of staff, which is again, is a real positive. And we've also, we're introducing a scheme with the system so that practices can help community dental services as well. So if, if there are too many referrals, if you like, to the system, practices will take up that. And that's, that's additional funding that we've, we've provided as well. Thank you.
Thank you. So in relation to CDS, we have two additional sessions per week, which is approved until the 31st of March 2025. Orthodontic case stats, we've had three successful applicants, which equates to 265 case stats approved, which is circa five and a half thousand UOA. They must start by the 31st of March and complete by the 30th of September 2025. We've had authorisation for 297 patients to receive treatment, which will clear the IMOS waiting list. And Kenny, correct me if I'm wrong, intermediate minor oral surgery, is that correct? Thank you. And I'd like to look to my colleague Fran, who should be on teams, to give an update on the Mablethorpe practice, please Fran, if you are there.
Thank you. Yes, I'm here. Good morning, everybody. Thank you for inviting me to join you today. My name is Francesca Barnes. I'm a Commissioning Manager for the East Midlands Primary Care Team. I'm very pleased to bring you an update on a new dental service in Mablethorpe, where we have launched an innovative bespoke service model for the population of Mablethorpe. The service is located, if you're not already aware, in the lovely modern Marisco Medical Practice. We ensured that there was a managed launch of this service from September 24, inviting patients to register their interest to attend the practice ahead of time. This meant that from the first day, the service was being fully utilised as the patient could have their appointment straight away. There's been some excellent feedback from patients to date, which is a really welcome result. And the provider is also on track to exceed their contracted delivery for this year, which is very reassuring, especially as we have devised a stepped approach to the launch of this contract. Activity will increase each year until year three, so the practice's capacity will continue to expand until at least year 26, 27. We're holding monthly meetings with the provider and working closely together to provide our support, but also gain regular assurance that the contract will continue to be successfully delivered. We're really pleased to be able to bring you this positive update this morning, especially as there are now a robust service in place for the population of Mablethorpe. Thank you.
Thank you, Fran, for that update. Can I now look to my colleague Anna? Anna, you're on teams to give an update on the Oral Health Needs Assessment.
Thank you, Vanessa.
Thanks, Anna.
I don't think I have a huge amount to say. The Oral Health Needs Assessment for Lincolnshire was an update on one that was published a couple of years ago. And it went through all the ICB governance processes in June last year, so it's been around a bit now. It gives a broad summary of the oral health of the population in Lincolnshire and also the latest data that were available at the time around access and which populations and which age groups particularly are struggling to access care. And we're at the stage now with the needs assessment where the commissioning team that you have sitting before you in the council chambers are using the information in the needs assessment to think about where services should be targeted, what type of services should be provided and commissioned. And also for our local authority colleagues about what prevention services we should be commissioning and to make sure that what we are providing fits with what we know about the population of Lincolnshire and will be the most effective. Happy to take any questions.
If that's the presentation, then we'll open up for questions then, please. Do we have any, please? Quiet start this morning. Councillor Kendrick first, please.
Yes, I was just wondering, obviously in the context of primary care services in case of GPs, DNAs are an issue. I'm guessing that this is not necessarily an issue in, with dental care because of charging and things like that. But is there any issue at all with DNAs? Do not attends, sorry, I should clarify what that, what I mean.
If I can take this question, councillor Kendrick. It's incredibly frustrating as a clinician to have do not attends. Especially, especially with patients, you find that new patients to practices tend to do not attend more. They get their problem solved. For example, a root treatment, a dentist could spend an hour opening into root canal, getting the patient out of pain, they have a follow-up visit for another hour, guess what, they don't turn up. And that is incredibly frustrating. I also work in secondary care as well and we have the same problem in secondary care. Most practices now have a system, it may be your own practice has the same, where you're texted or emailed or whatever. So practices are trying their hardest. But obviously if someone doesn't catch up for, for an hour, that's loss of income, staff costs have to be paid. The practice loses money. Under the NHS, we're not allowed to charge for, for, for that missed time. And it, and it is a problem. And as I said, it's, you know, taking on patients with high dental needs is challenging because of the contract. And then if they don't turn up again for an appointment, it's, it's incredibly frustrating. So I'm speaking as a clinician saying that and an ex-practice owner as well. Thank you.
Thank you very much for that. That's concerning to hear. I don't know if there's any way or means that colleagues here can increase awareness of the need to let a dental practice know if they're unable to attend. I seem to think that we're, we're missing something here, Chairman. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. I've got councillor Smith next, please.
Thank you, Chairman. In the report, it references a large number, I think it's about three separate pilot schemes that are in the report. And one thing I noticed while I was reading it is, I think in two of them from memory, the criteria to be admitted into those pilots, they were changed to allow a broader scope of practices, which on the face of it, Chairman, to me, it seems a good thing. My, my concern is when you set these schemes up, they are usually, criteria are usually put there for a reason, for you to be admitted into their schemes. So the question is, Chairman, are our presenters confident that the, the changes in the goalposts, if you like, will not undermine the effectiveness of the pilots that are currently up and running? And be that the quality of care for patients for those practices will not be harmed and will be enhanced through those pilots? Thank you, Chairman.
So, again, if I may take this, please. So the two sort of, well, one pilot was on the cardiovascular. So the link between, there is a huge link between poor oral health and general health. And those figures are coming out clearly, you know, there's more and more figures being produced that highlight this, the effects. Now, with the blood pressure pilot, this is a scheme whereby five practices in Lincolnshire were chosen. We had, I think, expressions of interest of 13. They've been chosen because of two things. One, we've gone to areas of deprivation. And secondly, we wanted a wide geographical distribution in Lincolnshire, really. So we cover the coast, we go down to Grantham, we're over in Gainsborough, you know, it's a, it's a wide, wide range. I would highlight, this is, this, this ties in with our Lincolnshire dental strategy of, and the last two parts of the strategy are integration and prevention. So integration, we're linking ourselves with medicine. Prevention, we're trying to prevent things happening. And if we can pick up someone, for example, with high blood pressure, we're preventing cardiovascular, we're preventing strokes, we're saving the NHS money, you know, it's a really, really good project. And I would say that in the second day of that project, we picked up a 40-year-old individual who had a blood pressure of 180 over 120. So we have potentially saved that gentleman's life and we've referred him to, you know, to have treatment. So that's a huge, huge plus. And I think the, the team should be complimented naturally because we are the only, we're the only area in the Midlands with, with this in place. Birmingham do have, but that's tied to their dental school. We are the only area in the Midlands that are going out into primary care, providing this pilot. And I think the team should be complimented and that's an excellent scheme.
Thank you. No, absolutely. And that, that story is quite terrifying. I'm, I'm only 10 years younger than that, so that's quite a scary thought. The only thing I'd say is when the pilots are completed, again, it's not for, I appreciate this committee due to when council actions are, are due to take place, but I think it will be helpful and quite illuminating for that to come back to the new committee. So we can see for ourselves just exactly in more detail, because I appreciate it's ongoing and you can't give chapter and verse at the moment, what, what impact that has. Because by the sounds of it, Chairman, it's already having a, a very good impact. And it's, it's, has been said to be, very much to be welcomed. And thank you for answering the question.
And, you know, if I may, if I may carry on, sorry, but we have, we have another pilot in the pipeline to do with diabetes as well. And, and again, that's, the effects of poor oral health on diabetes is significant. So that's why we've chosen that one too. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Just building on from councillor Smith's comment, can you expand on, or sorry, can you advise how patients are reacting to these new initiatives? And are the dentists who we know are already overstretched often feeling able to deliver this additional workload?
Thank you. So we've had feedbacks. We've now got eight providers across dentistry and optometry providing the service. And we've had excellent feedback from, and as Kenny said, a huge number of expressions of interest for those that were keen to be involved with this. It's a limited pilot. It's targeted in areas with a high prevalence for hypertension. So it was, it was targeted areas in which we focused the pilots and just a handful of schemes. But we've also had excellent patient feedback. And as Kenny says, we've had ongoing cases such as, you know, the patient who presented with exceptionally high blood pressure. And so essentially by even identifying two of those patients who potentially would have gone on to need further care, the pilot essentially covers its costs in terms of what's needed. But yeah, patient feedback and contractor feedback's been excellent. And we will bring back, happy to bring back the, the outcome, the ends in July, so we'll happily bring back the outcome.
And to make you aware, it's not dentists who are taking blood pressure readings or doing the diabetes check. It's members of the dental team, which of course empowers them, you know, and it, it's great for practice building. The dental care, the DCPs, as we call them, you know, they feel, as I said, empowered. They're doing something away from the normal job. They, and it's, it's worked incredibly well.
That's excellent. Thank you. Councillor Allen, next, please.
Thank you, Chairman. I, I was interested in the table that gave the number of the proportion of the population in Lincolnshire that was actually had access to the NHS dentistry system. But I just wondered whether anybody's done any work to find out what, what the population of Lincolnshire is as a whole that gets access to dentistry, including the private sector? Because it does strike me that we're not short, we're not short of dentists, to be honest. I mean, you know, I come from Sleaford and we must have got about six dentists in Sleaford practices, that is, not just dentists. But we're very short of dentists that want to work in the NHS. And I just wondered, having experience of both the NHS system and the private sector system, I'm not totally sure I would want to go to an NHS dentist either. Because the private sector dentistry is, you know, very much targeted around prevention rather than the contract-driven NHS ones, which used to be driven around extractions and fillings. So I just wondered whether, you know, a good proportion of our population goes private because it's a better service.
Well, if you don't mind me saying, councillor, I would disagree with you about, you know, going to an NHS dentist. There are some excellent NHS dentists around with the...
Councillor Allen, please allow for them to come back after you've asked your question and don't go over, yeah, you know, after.
There is, the concept, the concept that NHS dentistry is free, it has never been a concept since the NHS, two years after the NHS started. You pay for NHS treatment. There are three bands and those bands relate to, to what you've received. I would steer you towards the Public Accounts Committee that took place on, on Thursday. That was a, it's, it's on live, it's on television. They had Amanda Pritchard and Sir Chris Witty speaking at that. It's an excellent view. I would recommend you view that. It gives the wider view of dentistry. And they're frank and to the point in that really. So I would, I would recommend you, you view that.
Thank you. Before I bring you back in, I've got Anna that's indicated that'd like to speak and then I'll bring you back in.
Thank you, councillor. I just thought I'd come back in on the question about the data and what proportion of people are attending private care. It's very difficult to find this out because we can't access the records of private dentists. So short of going to every single private dentist and asking them to share their information, we can't get that data. We do know from the GP patient survey, which is held every year and asks questions about dentistry, that of those who didn't get an NHS dentist, a third said it's because they preferred to go privately. So we know, and this was for Lincolnshire, so that we know there's a significant proportion of the population who choose to go privately. We also know anecdotally that there's a proportion who feel they have to go privately because they don't have the NHS option in some areas. But in a lot of cases, it is a choice that people make, but we can't get accurate numbers on that data.
Thank you. Thank you for that response. So we know that there's at least a third and that's probably more than is going to the NHS system. I hope it's more than a third because I would like to think that a good proportion of our population in Lincolnshire is getting some sort of dental treatment across the provision as a whole. And there does seem to be an awful lot of dentists that do work in the area, perhaps not just in the NHS system. The, the comment I made was that when I used to go to my NHS dentist, I got a free inspection. But if I wanted the polish and descale, which is fundamentally the prevention side of dentistry, it's ensuring that you don't need to go for fillings and so on, I had to pay for that. So I, I do pay through it through, you know, the provision to the NHS that comes out of taxes. And then I was paying extra for the, what I saw as the prevention side of dentistry. And the last time I went to an NH dentist, they said to me, I don't, I don't know what you're here for because the inspection shows you don't need any extractions or fillings. So that's when I decided that the sort of provision I was getting out of the NHS dentistry system wasn't what I was really after. Because I said, I answered... dentistry system wasn't, uh, what I was really after, because I said, my answer to that question, or that statement was, well, I don't come to a dentist to have fillings and extractions, you know, I come here to have the de-scale and polish which prevents that. Um, and as a consequence of that, I decided I may as well just go private, uh, because, um, I, I was quite happy to pay the fifty quid or whatever it was for the inspection each, um, six months, um, because I was paying for everything else anyway. So I'm, I'm quite sure there are some good NHS dentists, um, and I'm quite sure there's a lot of dentists, um, that provide an NHS service within their private practice. Uh, but I do wonder whether there's a lot of dentists that don't like operating within an NHS system, uh, because it's targeted around, um, reactions as opposed to prevention. And that's stepped back to the contract that it's operated. And I think, you know, it's all very well, and I think it's very good that you spend an awful lot of time then going through schools, teaching people how to, uh, brush their teeth properly and so on and so on, um, which is a necessary thing in terms of prevention again, um, and the sort of thing that parents used to do, but don't seem to do anymore. Um, but, um, I, I do see a lot of the dentistry, um, provision that we should have as being the prevention side of things, so that we don't have to have lots of fillings and lots of extractions.
Thank you for that. Um, there are four components of the Lincolnshire dental strategy. Uh, one is workforce, one is access, the third one is integration and the last one is prevention. We are acutely aware that we have to move from a reparative service to a preventative service. Prevention comes in all shapes and forms and I'll, I'll hand over to Lucy. I would just reiterate the point that I made, you know, before, dentistry, NHS dentistry has never been free at the point of source. There are exempt groups, children, pregnant women, chi- um, ladies who've had a baby in a, in, in the year, there is a significant group who do not pay, but dentistry has never been free at the point of source. I'll pass you over to Lucy.
If possible, just, I've never been a part of an exempt group, I've always, I've paid my way.
Yeah, okay, I think he was just clarifying because I think he said for a point of entry, but anyway, carry on Lucy, thank you.
Thank you, Chairman. And just to come back on the prevention element, obviously, um, having a, a regular dental check-up is an important part of dental prevention, but there's a lot of work that we do that's more upstream there, um, and, um, that would include, and, and we work across all ages, but it includes an awful lot of work with children and young people, with families, starting right from, um, our health visiting service and supporting parents to understand kind of when and how to look after the, um, the gums and the, and the, and the early teeth of their, uh, young children, right through to our Lincolnshire Smiles Toothbrushing Programme. But we also do a lot of work with our older adult population in Lincolnshire as well, particularly through our, um, sonar programme, so swallowing oral health and nutritional ambassadors, which is a really, um, important programme that we run in Lincolnshire, working with Linker, um, and supporting, uh, care home staff to look after the oral health of the, uh, of the people that they're caring for. So we do an awful lot of work outside of the, the dental practice in, in Lincolnshire because that's a really important part of prevention as a whole.
And I would like to just highlight the sauna programme as well. Oth- other areas are looking at our sauna programme and wanting to t- to take it on. It's a fantastic, fantastic programme.
Thank you. I've got councillor Mackinson Saunders next please.
Well, you learn something every time because I've never heard of half of these initiatives that you're telling us about today and it's really good. And that was one thing I was going to ask you about, how, how people know that you can go to these pilot providers and get these, um, these services? How are we getting the message out to people? Because I've, I've been a councillor for a pretty long time and who's feeding down to tell us so that we can feed outwards again? Because I do think there's a bit of gap in that. Um, so, uh, another point I was going to make was, um, all those, your pilots and all the rest of it, and I'm, and they are, they're really innovative and good, um, they're all in large, uh, large co- larger conurbations. And I do worry about, um, the deprived people that live in our villages, they're left out all the time and how on earth they get to some of these places to access the services. And, and I think we do need people who will shout out and fly the flag for, for our rural communities. Um, and finally, I was going to say thank you very much for the, um, the new service in Mabelthorpe. I know how much it's appreciated. Um, we've, is even one of my councillors from Louth is going down and there's a patient down there because they're so desperate to get some, some treatment. So thank you for that.
Thank you. So in response to that, in terms of, um, communicating to patients, um, the hypertension case finding service is an example, um, that's a, that's a national pilot and as Kenny's stated, we are, um, we are the ones that have taken on every element of the pilots. We've done it in our opticians and our dental practices. So we've promoted that, um, through, um, social media, local press, um, over Christmas, you might have seen a BBC News article promoting, um, outcomes, um, there's, it's a walk-in service, um, so it's, um, if, uh, opportunistically people are there, um, they're able to, um, get the BP checked. Um, so it's promoted in a variety of different ways, it's opportunistic if they're in there and therefore, um, uh, routine care, um, but also it can just be walk-in if they're passing, um, uh, passing by and want to get the BP checked. For example, we've got a mix across the county, it is targeted, so it's in areas of, of need, um, so where we've identified actually those, those are the target areas, um, for the case finding pilots to be, um, held. But it's a variety of, um, non-traditional settings, so it could be while you're going for a dental check-up or your eye test, collecting, uh, a new pair of specs, um, but it could also be, one of the opticians is in, um, uh, Morrison's in Lincoln, so it's in the retail environment. So it, um, it can, um, hopefully attract additional footfall of patients who won't opportu- uh, won't routinely be accessing care, but might opportunistically in a non-traditional setting. So we do work, um, closely with our communications teams, try and promote in different ways, um, but happy to take any, um, feedback outside, um, the committee for any additional gaps you might feel or, um, opportunities we're, we're not taking advantage of, so.
Well, I have to say in the outposts of rural East Lincolnshire, um, we don't have big supermarkets where people can go in and, and get that sort of information and stuff. So anything you can do to help us towards the East Coast is gratefully received because I don't think we're getting the same bite of the cherry as some of the other places and people are suffering some of the problems, aren't they?
Um, just to, just to note on that, um, East Coast is one of our target areas, particularly for that, for that one. So we've got, we've got, um, a couple of providers, opticians and dentists, we've doubled up within Skegness as one example. Um, so we've got, um, a couple of providers just within Skegness itself. So we are trying to, um, make sure we are targeting it in communities and obviously East Coast is one of the, one of the focus areas, but happy to provide more details, uh, post-committee.
You need to come up the coast a bit and inland a bit.
I was waiting for that councillor Mackinson Saunders. Uh, any other questions at the moment? No? Uh, yeah, councillor Scullysey.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just want to say thanks for the report, it was a really good report. And as a community nurse, I deal with adults with disabilities and I must say that the service that we're getting spolled in, um, is absolutely tremendous from the NHS. Um, it's not just about, as my colleague said, about extractions and fillings. I've got a gentleman that I support regularly there and, um, he's been to the dentist at Ribeter in Boston, they are phenomenal there with him. He's very nervous, but they put him at ease. He's having partial dentures done, um, everything done to support him and not just to, you know, to put a quick fix. So I do thank you for that and I know that spolding as with MenCap, we have lots of people that go to NHS dentists and they really do a good job there. So thank you.
I just want to say thank you, that's really, really nice to hear and I'll take great pleasure in feeding that back to the team. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions at this point? Councillor Smith, I'll allow you to come back.
Thank you, Chairman. It's very brief, um, and I appreciate this information is some years old, um, when I, and I'm going back a couple of years because I was a boy at the time, so I'm, it's quite some years ago. Um, but on what councillor Allen's saying around why are you here, you don't, I had the exact comment made to me at the time, uh, and the unfortunate thing is, Chairman, my, in my family, gum disease is a hereditary issue, uh, and that wasn't picked up properly at the time because my teeth looked, everything looked hunky-dory. Uh, and now, uh, again, going through a, a, a monthly payment scheme basically through, through my dental practice because I can't get an NHS dentist, uh, they've now said, oh, you could have a problem. Had that been done fifteen, fourteen years ago, Chairman, I might not be in the situation I'm in now. I appreciate things may have changed, but I can absolutely see where councillor Allen comes from when he says what he says because I have experienced that myself. And the problem you have is with the, as councillor Allen alluded to, with the contract, is there are people, and my mother is one of them, who hasn't been able to see one for so long because she couldn't afford to see a dentist. She now has a, an issue be- beyond repairing her attitude, is if they touch them, they'll fall out and she'll lose them. Uh, and that's in, in the fifth richest wo- country in the world, Chairman, that's, that's not on, pure and simple for, for anybody. Uh, and having seen what that's done to her and it's quite serious, it's, it could necessitate a quite substantial operation, Chairman. That just isn't on for, for anybody, whether it's my mother, you know, somebody's girlfriend, partner, it doesn't matter. We, we shouldn't be in that situation and I appreciate it's not free at the point of need like the rest of the system is, but this current system, Chairman, has its problems and that needs, which I appreciate isn't a matter for yourselves, but that needs feeding back up because the people who aren't exempt, uh, or who don't come under that group, for example, people on PIP, yes, it's not means tested, but statistically, Chairman, those who are on PIP are on lower incomes, have less disposable income and more complex health problems and they aren't protected. And we need to do what we can to say to the ministers, actually, those are the sorts of people who you actually need to put into that group so they can be protected, so they can have their, men, their, uh, oral health looked after, because the system doesn't allow oral health to be factored into said assessment, Chairman, so it's a double-edged sword. It isn't acknowledged by the system when it's being assessed for financial support and then they're not given support to have somebody see to it and then you get problems that are quite serious in terms of health, Chairman. So if we can do anything with regards to Secretary of State on that, I'd be very much pr- I appreciate, probably highly unlikely, Chairman, but just if we can kick it up the chain, it'd be very much appreciated.
So just in, in reply, it, um, it's not really a question, if you know what I mean, more of, more of a statement. Um, just, just to say it's a national thing this and it relates to the, the contract. And just so that everyone is aware, from a commissioning point of view, NHS dentistry has only ever been commissioned for fifty percent of the population as well. That's, that's how it's always been. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Councillor Mackinson Saunders, yeah?
Is the, the dental contract likely to be reviewed nationally or is it going to stay as the Blair government changed it?
So the Public Accounts Committee, Amanda Pritchard said yes. It would, they were very frank, this meeting was very frank, they answered the questions directly and I think you will see change. How, how long, how long that will be, we don't know, we don't know locally, but I think change is on the agenda, yeah.
Okay, thank you. I've got a number of questions myself as well. Just going to pick up first though on councillor Smith's comments. I don't think we want to be writing to the Secretary of State at this point because I think you start diluting it with more and more letters going in, I think we need to choose our fights. So, thank you. Okay, my first question is, on page twenty-three, under the heading access, can you expand on what the three-year commissioning plan is and how this differentiates from the previous plans and strategies?
I could probably start, I think I set, I set the, the context at the beginning. So, uh, part of the three-year commissioning plan, the first year has been the schemes that Vanessa talked about. A lot of it, a lot of it was, um, some non-recurrent by nature because we haven't got some big procurements like the Mabelthorpe, we'd concluded the Mabelthorpe. Um, we're just reviewing the three-year commissioning plan now in light of the NHS England sharing the operational planning guidance. So that will be, that will give clarity of what the commissioning plan will look like for twenty-five, twenty-six, um, specifically focusing on the priorities set out through the planning guidance and also nationally you would have heard, um, the improvement in access for urgent access. Now we do have various pilots operating, uh, in Lincolnshire for urgent access, but the model of urgent access is likely to change with the requirement of, uh, and we don't know what that means for Lincolnshire in terms of our seven, our contribution to the seven hundred thousand appointments, but that is something we'll be working up during this month and March. And as I said at the start of the meeting, very happy to share, in terms of the three-year commissioning plan, what our plan looks like for twenty-five, twenty-six, taking account of the national priorities and also continuing to progress our local dental strategy. And some of the things you've heard today, we want to make sure that we're still delivering on local, delivering against local health need, where are our priority areas and somehow just making sure it's aligned in then with some of the national priorities to make sure we get the, the maximum impact, um, for our population.
Thank you. My next question is, on page twenty-four, paragraph five point one point one, has NHS England issued any guidance on what will take the place of the current new patient premium when it expires in March of this year? And if so, can you expand on this and what feedback other dental practices have made?
Yeah, I, it was again mentioned at Public Accounts Committee, there does, it will end at the end of March, there doesn't appear to be anything in, um, uh, to follow up, that, that, that was what we were told. Thank you.
Thank you. Seems like a real missed opportunity, but thank you. Okay, uh, on page twenty-four, paragraph five point two point three, are there any plans to continue offering a local dental recruitment scheme as this has clearly yielded results and it is, is it possible to advise the committee on which areas will benefit from the eleven applications that have been approved and how soon they will be practising?
So at the moment, um, the, the expression of interest we've, we've had is, as we've, as Vanessa updated at the beginning of the meeting, uh, we've got eleven schemes, we're really keen to continue to roll that out. So obviously we need to make an assessment of the eleven expression of interest, what the take-up of that looks like, we can't, we're not able to share an update of that at today's meeting, but any learning from that we will then take into the planning for twenty-five, twenty-six. Uh, Kenny's already talked about in terms of our Lincolnshire dental strategy, one of the pilots is about, um, retention on our workforce, but also attracting our workforce. So anything we will do, it will be targeted to support, um, continue growth in our workforce. I don't know if Kenny wants to add to that.
Yeah, th- this is just a personal plea, if you don't mind, and that is the term dental desert, which Lincolnshire has coined with, does nothing for re- recruitment and I would just please don't use it because it really has an, it has an effect on recruitment. If you're constantly being referred to as a dental desert, and it's a term that we never use, I may add within this group, but others do, and the dental desert, lack of access to NHS care, it really is having an effect on recruit-, you know, would you come to a desert?
My next question is, on page twenty-two, the report refers to reductions of almost sixteen thousand in units of dental activity as a result as contracts changes. Do you expect this level of dental activity to be re-procured so there is no long-term loss of activity?
So in terms of that, that was, um, uh, uh, in, in a way, it's part of good news in that we haven't had any terminations of contract, we've stabilised the services hopefully with a lot of the local schemes and the relationship with the profession within Lincolnshire. Um, we have, um, we do work closely with practices if there needs to be a rebasing activity, so that's often to make sure a practice remains resilient or to, um, address any challenges they might be facing. But yes, activity won't be lost, it, it gets, um, re-procured and that'll be part of our future plans for the next three years.
And I know, Chair, you've heard from Anna Island earlier in terms of our oral health needs assessment, what that does allow us to do is those sixteen thousand UDA, units of dental activity, we'd be able to prioritise that now to areas of need based on our oral health needs assessment. So it does give us the opportunity, it won't be lost activity, it just might be in a different place to where it previously was provided.
Okay, thank you. And you're pleased to know this and my final question, I refer to the table on page twenty on overall dentist access rates. Since you last reported to the committee in April twenty twenty-four, the Lincolnshire rates have largely remained the same, but the national rates of dental access have increased. Is this a concern?
It's, it is a concern that we have seen a reduction, um, in access, um, in terms of comparison to the national picture, um, but we are making steady growth in terms of our local position. I expect through the plans we've put in place this year and the plans we'll put in next year that we'd like to see certainly an increase in both adult and children, young people provision.
Okay, in which case I'm going to move to the proposal. I'd like to propose that the presenters be thanked for their report and attendance at the meeting, that the efforts in the last year in improving access to NHS dental service in Lincolnshire be welcomed, and to record our support for the blood pressure scheme. And finally, that an update on the NHS dental services in Lincolnshire be programmed as an item for the committee and the new county council term. That's seconded by councillor Wooton. All those in favour, please show. Thank you. That's supported unanimously, and thank you for attending today. Thank you. We'll now move on to agenda item six, the Lincolnshire acute services review stroke service implementation. Simon, apparently our presenters aren't here at the moment because we're slightly ahead of schedule. So do you want to move on potentially probably to item seven or eight? Is it? Yeah, P and A first, please. Yeah, are we happy to move to item eight, the committee? Yeah, okay, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Chairman. Last Thursday morning, five members of the committee attended a working group meeting and had a presentation on the Lincolnshire Pharmaceutical Needs Assessment twenty twenty-five, which the Health and Wellbeing Board, the county council's Health and Wellbeing Board, is required to produce every year in line with national requirements. As was emphasised to the committee, the document is a very technical document, and it focuses on dispensing activity. Is there enough dispensing activity in Lincolnshire? As opposed to some of the other themes, for example, back in December, the committee was looking at, the committee had an item on pharmacy services, and there are a number of other things such as pharmacy first, which were covered in that item. So it is, although it's a narrow focus document, it is heavily detailed. The conclusion that the Health and Wellbeing Board, the conclusion in the draft is that there are no gaps in dispensing provision. And the draft, which was circulated on Monday of this week, the committee agrees with that overall conclusion. So the draft was circulated on Monday, and it's for the committee's approval. And if the committee does approve it, it will be passed on to the public health team as the committee's final response. I will take any questions. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you, and I'd just like to thank those that joined us on the working group. It's quite a dry subject and very, very technical, but it was much appreciated, those that did. And thank you to Simon for the report. So any questions, please? Councillor Smith?
Not a question, Chairman, as was on the working group, but as you say, just to, A, thank Simon, but it's an exceedingly, having I done that for the first time, it's an exceedingly frustrating process by how constrained the P and A actually is. And again, I know it's not anything we can alter, but I do think, Chairman, it needs to be looked at to rather urgent wick, because it is overly, you're not expecting it to solve the world, of course you're not, Chairman, but it's overly restrictive in what it deems falls under its remit when GP services have changed so, so much since then. And I think really, if anybody from on high is listening, as unlikely as that is, it would be good if they look at that. Because at the minute, I don't think it serves the residents well, it doesn't serve the GP practice well, it doesn't really serve anybody as well as it should do. And whilst it answers the questions it was designed to, we've moved on a lot since then, and they need to look at that, Chairman.
Yeah, I think it's fair to say that Alison, who writes P and A, would probably fully agree. And I think those sort of comments have been passed over before, but it does seem to remain in that very, very prescriptive manner, which is quite frustrating and difficult. But those comments have been picked up upon, and they will be fed through. And I do understand that there is some work that Tony McGinty's doing, and he'll obviously pick up on those points as well. So I do think that's a point there. Yes, councillor Mackinson's on.
Would you like somebody to propose that we accept the draft?
That'd be fantastic. Thank you.
I'd like to propose it.
Thank you. And a second, please. Thank you, councillor Smith. All those in favour, please show. Thank you. That's supported. Thank you. I'll make a proposition, because I doubt we've got speakers, that we move on to item nine, please, if the committee's happy to do so. Yep, thank you. In which case we'll move over to item nine, the Stamford Health Engagement Exercise. This item is set out on pages one hundred and eight, sorry, one hundred and nine to one hundred and ten of the agenda pack. And the committee's draft response was emailed to members of the committee on the seventeenth of February. I'll hand over to Simon to introduce the report, please.
Thank you. Thank you, Chairman. Members of the committee will recall that at the last meeting, a request was made to defer this item following the need to check some of the facts that were restated. For example, the misunderstanding, not just, I believe on my part, but generally about the word minor injuries unit, but minor injuries units can continue in the NHS. It's just that their data is not used in the national A and E statistics. So apologies that those things were not sorted last time. But since that time, the draft response has been redrafted, and several members of the committee have commented on, well, several members of the committee have replied to me indicating their satisfaction with the redraft, and that is for the committee's approval today. We are a little bit late, but the ICB has allowed us an extra three weeks. So if it is approved today, it can go off this afternoon. Thank you, Chairman.
Okay, I just once again want to thank Simon for his work on this. I think it's certainly been around a few times, and he's very graciously taken on board all comments that were raised. So thank you for that. Do we have any further comments at this point, or are we happy to accept? Thank you. We've got a second, thank you, councillor Cleaver. All those in favour, please show. Thank you. That's supported. Any, no, okay. In which case, we've got a proposition that we move to agenda item ten, the work programme. So I'll hand back over to Simon to walk us through that as well, please.
Okay, just looking at the work programme on page one one three of the pack. Unfortunately, the item three on the list, which is an update on the NHS People's Strategy, is not going to come forward in March. The new director of workforce, and whose name is listed on page one one three, has only been in post a short time, so she has requested a deferral of this item. I am not sure whether there's going to be an item on the Humber Acute Services Review, as I mentioned earlier, because I'm not sure whether we will get anything from the Secretary of State. So that in effect leaves two substantive items for the meeting on the twelfth of March. If I can just move, obviously, the twelfth of March is the final meeting in the county council's term. I am starting to think about some of the items that the committee will be sort of programming in from June onwards, when the committee resumes after the election period. And obviously, we've picked up one or two today, for example, an update on dental services. And I think we would still be assuming that we would have updates on some of the other items, such as GP services, which the committee has frequently had over the last couple of years. But perhaps that is a discussion, if there's time on the twelfth of March, for suggestions for the new county council term. Also, next Tuesday, jumping again, at eleven o'clock in North Hycombe, there's an opportunity for members of the committee, if they're free, to join the chairman for a visit to the, well, I'm calling it the headquarters, but it's basically the coordination centre for the Non Emergency Patient Transport Service. So if anyone is free to get to North Hycombe for eleven o'clock next Tuesday morning, Tuesday the twentieth of February, we can add you to the list for the trip. I don't know if anyone is interested in that or would like to think about that.
Thank you, Simon. Anyone that would like to join on the trip, please raise, it'd be helpful. Okay, and any comments on the work programme? I've got councillor Allen first, then councillor Mackinson's on.
I think the discussion, if there is time on the, for the March meeting, about the future works programme in a bit more detail in terms of the new council term would be very useful. I think one thing that I found when I came on to this committee four years ago, or virtually four years ago, was that there was quite an awful lot that had not been resolved, shall we say, during the previous committee terms, council term. And it was quite difficult picking those sort of things up. So it may well be a question of rolling them forward into the new council with some sort of comments as well about, you know, this is a long term issue. And to a certain extent, you can almost pick any single item off the past four years that we've actually had and that could roll forward to the next term, because I'm not totally sure anything's been resolved at all.
Yeah, I mean, what we've tried to do, whenever it's a new committee, whether that be a change at county or a change of district, we do offer training, we do try and bring people up to date and say these are the programmes that we're, you know, currently in the midst of, and we've covered a lot of ground upon. And we do try and do that, but of course, it's still a lot to catch up on. It is a big committee and there's a lot of workload, so, but we'll certainly take those comments on board. Okay, councillor Mackinson's on.
I wondered if there was any chance of being able to get a bit of an update on cancer services for the twelfth of March. There was quite a lot on the radio coming over today saying how patchy the services are throughout the whole country. And I wondered if we could look at both Lincoln and Grimsby services, if it's possible to fit something in. Because it's something that worries so many people, and you're looking exasperated. But it's something that's always, people are always interested in, and I don't know if you can pull things together quite that quickly.
I doubt that, I mean, I can try, but I doubt that we'd be able to, generally the leading time for the people, for the cancer services item, we have an item every, usually every September, sort of an annual item. But it may be something that needs to be perhaps more often than every September or so. But I can certainly see, but I doubt very much that we'd be able to get anyone in, given that it's three weeks today is the next meeting, and what with the leading times for papers, it's going to be, going to be difficult. But yeah.
Just a brief update would suffice, given what was, there was an awful lot about it this morning.
I mean, potentially, we could get something to go into the chairman's announcements, just to hold up for the moment in time. I think the closer we get to the elections as well, the more difficult it is to try and encourage NHS presenters to attend. So I think that's one of the other problems we've got in trying to gap fill realistically. But we'll do what we can. Thank you. Any other comments on the work programme? No, obviously, we've still got a couple of items to go, so it may well be that they'll roll in, but they'll get picked up upon anyway. So hopefully, our presenters are here now.
Yes, yeah, okay, brilliant. In which case, we'll now move back to agenda item six, the Lincolnshire Acute Services Review Stroke Services Implementation. This item was circulated as part of the agenda pack on pages thirty-one to forty-four. Decisions on the implementation of the Lincolnshire Acute Services Review were made in June twenty twenty-two. Stroke service is the only one of the four elements of the review where implementation of the decisions is not fully complete. Our last update on stroke services was in April twenty twenty-four, and I'd like to welcome our presenters online. Darren Fradley, Deputy Chief Executive and Chief Integrating Officer for Lincolnshire Community and Hospitals NHS Group. Carl Ratcliffe, Integration Specialist, Lincolnshire Community and Hospitals NHS Group. So if you could go over the report in about five to ten minutes, please, and we'll take questions at the end. Thank you.
Thank you, Chair, and just apologies from Carl. Carl couldn't make it, he's actually had to take some urgent leave. So I've got Anna Richards with us, our Director of Communications. And thank you for inviting us. Colleagues, remember from my previous meeting that I've only been in Lincolnshire since August of last year. I've done my best to represent the progress we've done, but I'm surely appreciate if we get any questions that we can't cover, I'll do the courtesy of coming back to you as quickly as we possibly can afterwards. And so what I'll do is I'll skim over the paper high level and then obviously opportunity for questions. So obviously, as you said, stroke is part of the acute services review pack and was a model that we moved forward with by consolidating stroke services from the Boston site onto the Lincoln site. And that happened in September of twenty-three. The pack, the paper rather, outlines the series of progress that we made, but also the challenges, and I'll draw out those items. So as we've moved both of the services onto a single site, some of the challenges that remain at the minute is our length of stay. So this is the time at which patients stay in hospital, which is currently operating eighteen days. And the plan is to get that down to ten. And you'll see the components in the pack that are contributing to that. And the first one, section three of the report, highlights that from the point at which we have Lincolnshire residents ready to discharge to our ability to get them discharged, noting that these are some of the most complex needs that we deal with on discharge, is taking us an average six point five days now. The best stroke services in the country with the best discharge function gets that numbered between two and three days. So we've still got a fair way to go, as you can see in that work. We've currently got a national programme in, so the CLIA project in highlighted in section three point one of the report of where they're looking at actually our clinical operating model, and maybe expand a little bit more than the information within the report. So a stroke pathway typically works in four blocks. Your acute interventional care, which is from the point of stroke up to seventy-two hours, that's the most intensive intervention, and called the HAZU part. The HAZU parts are the acute stroke units up to and including your first seven days. And both of those components are hospitalised care. Then we start planning for discharge after seven days and ideally have the discharge, as previously stated, at ten days and go to what we call an ESD, early supported stroke discharge. So this is care at home. And then finally, any rehabilitation care for individuals that can't go straight home, which should be disconnected from the kind of acute part of delivery. One of the challenges that we've got at the minute is we haven't disconnected the rehab part of the pathway from the acute pathway and deliver this separately. So what that does is it kind of mixes all of the different delivery points up together, and that's what's increasing our length of stay, and the CLIA project is here to help us with that. Suffice to say, though, improvements in thrombolysis referenced in section three point two, so from above sixty minutes for intervention down to twenty-eight minutes, and that number is still falling. And you can see that we've got an intervention team that meets patients with suspected strokes in the emergency department now. And then we've cross referenced that with you with the complaints that were received from the service or into the service in twenty twenty-four. Nineteen formal complaints, of which three were due to clinical care, all of which were low risk on full investigation. And the rest of them were communication matters and misunderstandings between relatives and clinical teams. So we keep an eye on that. And I suppose, helpfully, the feedback at eighty-seven percent positive for the service received. I'm going to, I'll go over the implementation work we're doing with the ambulance service. I think that's self explanatory on video triage. And then equally, we're improving on thrombectomy, but still not where we would like to be. So whilst that's going up, there's still some work to do there. And you can see some of the geographical components there, where we're not as challenged as people originally thought that we would be. In terms of the staffing model, section four of the report, the remaining challenge we've got is consultant workforce, and I'm sure I'll take some questions on that. So two substantive consultants, and then we have a variable three to five locums. What I would say is this is a national challenge, and we haven't seen the uptake in consultants that we were expecting to do when we brought the two units together. Having said that, we are a national Having said that, we are a national exemplar site on our advanced clinical practitioners, ACPs, and they are now being seen as a way to complement the consultant workforce moving forward. I don't think you'll ever see a, a space where consultants are not required in stroke, but I think you'll see a rebalancing of stroke consultants versus ACPs in the future. And some of the challenges you can see with beds in section four of the report as well are also commensurate with our ability, our inability at the minute to disconnect the, the rehabilitation and the early supported stroke pathway. So that's the work that we, 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 we're, we're going on with now. In terms of the build, so there was a, a programme of works that, that's been delayed for a variety of reasons. Quite happy to answer any of those delays under, under questions, but we're moving forward with the building in the summer of this year, six point five million build to get the right amount of beds in the right place so that we again can have the rehab beds on a separate ward to the hyperacute and acute stroke unit. At the minute, we do have outliers across the, the Lincolnshire County site, which is, which is not good in terms of the, the coherence of care and equally is what's contributing to our length of stay challenges. In terms of the audit data, section six, so by and large, the, the headline figure remains a snap outcome of, of a D, but you can see that there's quite a lot of movement now in the underlying numbers. And when you isolate what's holding at, at a D, it's the building work, which the stroke unit remains a score of an E. Obviously, the, the, the lower the letter, A, Bs and Cs are the better. And also the discharges holding us up, but we're expecting that both of those will start to move once we've got the, either the building work and or the rehab work completed as well. And it's recognised both regionally and nationally that we are making improvements, and that's referenced in section seven. And, and the amount of external support that we're seeking that are covered in the bullet points of there, both from the National Quality Improvement Programme, but also from some of the East Midlands partners as well. I think the point I would like to make is, even though strokes are moving into stroke networks, we've still got the geographical challenges of Lincolnshire, still needs a stroke service. And therefore, where other parts of the country are looking at networking their services and moving geographical components, we feel we've already done that work and we've now got to bear down onto the, onto, onto the model that we've got. And again, there's recognition there for our, our ACP workforce moving forward. Appendix I just covers the improvement project that the CLEAR team are in to do at the minute. So focusing on the areas that I've highlighted to you, which is the finishing, the optimisation of the stroke pathway, which will help both our length of stay, our discharge and rehabilitation as well. And I, I would say, I don't want to over assure the committee that we, we're going to get to a point where we, we're going to see a, a kind of a, a raft of new stroke consultants coming into this service because they just do not exist anymore. We continue to push on that in terms of education and in terms of recruitment. But actually, we're, we're looking at obviously strengthening that with the alternative models like ACPs, et cetera. And then what we'll do is obviously continue to talk to both our, our staff, our stakeholders and our residents as well. And you can see there's an engagement exercise in section five, which is currently covered over sixty stakeholders, and that will continue as part of the CLEAR work. And so Chair, if I may, I'll rest there. I think that gives you a skim of the paper, and I'll do my best to answer any questions and, and annual assist as well.
Okay, thank you very much. Any questions, please? Councillor Smith first.
Thank you, Chairman. With your indulgence, I do have three points, but the third is exceedingly brief. Given the expected, the, sorry, the expediated, excuse me, closure of stroke services at Pilgrim Hospital, have patients been exposed to enhanced risks and or poor service provision? This concern is evidenced at section three, page thirty three within the report, with community clinicians having two hundred patients between them. This is further highlighted at section six, page thirty seven and thirty eight. Secondly, Chairman, excuse me while I sort this out. I note the levels of recruitment for various roles in the stroke team, and would like to pay tribute to the work that has been done to fully recruit to various roles. I do however have concerns, which I appreciate is a national issue, on the number of consultants. And are our presentants confident that steps are being taken that will resolve this issue? And could our presenters advise how they currently mitigate the serious issue with the lack of consultancy availability? And finally, Chairman, I would be grateful when the trial has take, because there is reference to a trial that's currently taking place, Chairman. When this is taking place, it would be good for the committee to have a report back on how that's been successful for both ULHTC, ULHT, excuse me, and patients. Thank you, Chairman.
Are you happy to cover that? Thank you.
Yeah, sure. Thank you. So in terms of the, in terms of the risk point, I think, first of all, definitely highlighted in the paper where we, we see the remaining risk. It's, it's not good for us, it's not good for our residents in terms of the length of stay that we are currently registering on the Lincoln site. We are very clear that that needs to come down, and the additional narrative I gave you about decoupling the, the different components of the pathway, so we do the right care in the right component of the pathway at the right time will help with that. That's one of the driving reasons why we've brought the, the CLEAR working and remain connected to the, to the national, the national work stream as well. In terms of the move from the stroke site from Pilgrim to Lincoln, I think there's, there's data in, in the report that shows that actually we're getting increased timely access to interventional care at the first part of the stroke pathway. That was not the case, obviously, when we were running on two sites, and the challenges that we see with the workforce would have further diluted that, that response as well. So we, we're clear that we're getting better emergency care to these patients, but coming back to my previous point, I think it's, we, we're still really transparent about the risk of the length of stay and, and the impacts of that too. And then on your final point, if I may, which is on the recruitment and assurance there. So, so first of all, on the mitigation, so we do cross cover, as do most of the sites across the country where they've got consultant recruitment risks now, with general medical on call as well. And so that exists here. The second thing that we've done, and I really don't want to overstate this, but equally, committee should be assured, our ACP programme is seen in some regards as, as, as a large weight to the future of our delivery of stroke. And he's, he's being seen as a, quite a success item for other areas with similar challenges. And then finally, the, the workforce for therapies in particular. We're moving forward with largely under the group model now, bringing the two organisations together, ULTH, apologies, and LCHS, to bring that into a single stroke work, stroke therapeutic workforce, because at the minute, they're disconnected, and, and we all know when you have two teams, the word referral happens in, happens in the middle, which adds delay. So we're working on bringing those two teams together under the new group model to mitigate those delays. Thank you, Chair.
Pardon, I, I may have misheard there, I think it was ACHP, I think you said. Could you give a bit more detail on how that, that works? Because it's touched on in the report, but how, how is that mitigating the, the shortfall in consultancy? And you mentioned that it could be seen as a, as a way forward to, to bridging that gap. Do you, and I appreciate you may not be able to answer this now, if you, if you can't, come back and appreciate it. What are the risks of using that system rather than conventional consultancy? Because obviously, to be a consultant, there is a certain level of qualification, of training, of experience, et al, et cetera. So is there, are there any risks of, of not doing it through the conventional consultancy pathway? Or are there, or are there benefits that I'm not aware of? It'd be very helpful to know. Thank you.
Yes, of course. So it's ACPs, if I slipped in a H, I do apologise. So advanced clinical practitioner. So to, to, to give you a flavour of what they are. So those are either paramedics or nurses or physiotherapists. So there's different blends of them. So they're, they're initially trained in one of those skill sets. In fact, I'm a paramedic by background, and I've done three quarters of my ACP module. And so that gives you a feeling for kind of, you have much more of a diverse catchment for the workforce. The ACP programme is a three to four year programme where you specialise in an individual subject. So these individuals are specialised in stroke, so they will do a large component of stroke care. And, and, and to give you a, a general feel, so our middle grade doctors on our on-call rotors are often covered by ACPs as well. And, and, and I wouldn't say they've got an identical skill set, that their competency levels are very, very similar. I want to be very, very clear, ACPs do not and, and should not replace consultants because obviously consultants have got the additional training on top. But as a supplementary to a workforce, they are now being seen as one of those potential options. And I don't foresee in the future that we would see a non-consultant led stroke workforce, i.e. exclusively led by ACPs. But it certainly de-risks the staffing gaps that we've got. And in terms of risks, the, the biggest risk we'd have if, if we lost all of our consultants, because obviously then you'd just get non-stroke consultants that were giving advice to our stroke ACPs. So that's, that's our big red flag. But at the minute, our, our stroke consultants give the support to the ACPs to fill in the gaps in the model. I hope that answers your question.
Okay, thank you. I'm just gonna, Tom's alluded to some of what I was gonna say, so. But looking at page thirty three, bullet point three again, the second paragraph, stroke services are treating more patients than predicted compared to the modelling in the acute services review. Are you actually confident that even when the larger hyperacute stroke unit is in place, that you'll have the space, capacity and staff to be able to cope with this additional pressure? And one of the main concerns we had as a committee with the acute services review was when you moved from one site, two sites down to one site, that actually, if it didn't work and you weren't able to cover the concerns that caused that closure, then what next? Would that result in then potentially having no sites in Lincolnshire? So what are the risks that are associated here in potentially losing, you know, all consultants, as you've already sort of alluded to, and ended up going to a position where we'll have to look at more centralised services to places like Nottingham and so on?
Yeah, absolutely. So Chair, if I may, I'll start with the last bit first. So, so in, in, in my view, and in my clinical colleagues' professional view, centralising services in Nottingham is not a good solution for the residents of Lincolnshire, largely because of the, the, the distances involved. And, 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 and whether we like it or not, stroke is still a time critical intervention, as proven on the, in, in the graph in section three point two. In terms of beds and bed capacity, so when we, when we brought the, the two units together, we had a, a collective number of fifty two beds, which, which included eight hyperacute beds, so that early intervention stage. At the minute, we provide fifty two beds largely with the, the capacity of the stroke unit and then the outlying capacity, so twenty four outliers. So that's why our current position is not sustainable and why we need to do two things. Build the, 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 sorry, the refurbishment and build to the stroke unit. And then secondly, get those rehab beds, the rehabilitation beds into a, into a second part of the hospital, so the, the therapeutic element is all covered together. The straight answer to your question is, once we've concluded that work, we will have enough capacity on our hyperacute and acute areas, and then the rehab area secondly. Until we do that work, the capacity is challenged, and therefore that's why we've still got the outliers and the increase in the length of stay.
Okay, thank you. Then I have to say, it doesn't fill me with confidence in the slightest. Councillor Allen, please.
Thank you, Chairman. One of the other issues is discharge rates and trying to get people out of not only the acute wards and the therapeutic wards, but out of the therapeutic wards and back, back wherever, at least out of the hospital. I, I just wondered whether the delays in achieving that are the sort of traditional ones that the NHS has in terms of integrating that final part of the pathway with community care or whatever it is? Or is it something more significant and associated with the actual ongoing treatment for a stroke victim?
Yeah, sure. Thanks for your question. So, so from my perspective, there's three components of the delay here. And, and this is what obviously the, the, the CLEAR project gives us some real objectivity and holds the looking mirror up to our clinical teams and also to ourselves on, on what we're doing right and what, what opportunities we've got. But the three components to the delay. First of all, the fact that we, we've got the, the different parts of the stroke pathway mixed together, and therefore you don't concentrate the right type of care at the right time in the pathway, and therefore you get unnecessary duplication. That's the first part. The second part is that because we haven't decoupled the rehab component from the acute component, and they're delivering, delivering it in a separate area, we, we often don't, we blur the boundary. So the acute part lasts too long or the rehab part starts, starts too early. So the team are really working hard to, to, to get that, get that sorted. Coupled with the fact that we've got community teams working with acute teams, and, and you will have heard across all of our other papers, regardless of what service it is, one of the driving reasons for the group was to remove that referral culture between the two organisations and deliver a seamless pathway rather than have it stop at the acute service and then restart at the community service. So we're, we're confident as we bring the two therapy teams together, we'll get that, that, that pathway moving quicker under the group than we have done previously. And then the final bit is, if, if, if we're actually discharging back home, there are still some traditional delays of getting the right equipment in place at the right time and coordinating that work, which are, which are, which are similar to our discharge delays in other areas, and we're working on those. But I think a lot of this is about the team's coordination between the bedded and non-bedded parts of the pathway. And, and, and in reality, we need to get our house in order in that area before we, we start challenging anything else.
Okay, thank you. I've got councillor Lindgren, please.
Thank you, Chairman. Good morning. Welcome to Lincolnshire, and thank you for your report. On page thirty six, you state that we have twenty eight beds on the stroke unit in Lincoln, but you also have eighteen stroke patients on other wards. Can you explain to me how this works, please? And I'll go on to my next question. Time is of the element when someone has a stroke and you call for an ambulance. I live in Grantham, and it takes an ambulance at least forty five minutes to get to Lincoln Hospital, which is our stroke unit. It was Boston originally, which will probably take even longer. So would EMAS video triage, would that help a patient there once an ambulance gets to your home? Or would it just be information? Obviously, I assume they wouldn't be able to administer clot busting solution. That's my two questions. Thank you, Chairman.
Okay, thank you. So, so on the beds point, so currently, as you say, as you're highlighting in section four, thirty five bed, sorry, twenty eight beds on our stroke unit and then eighteen outliers. So how the outliers work at the minute is they, they will be on a series of wards that are close, closest to the stroke unit, but not on the stroke unit. So in general medical capacity. And then the stroke team, whether that be consultants or ACPs, would outreach to those wards. So they don't get treated as just general medical patients. They still get treated as stroke patients, but obviously on, on those wards. And the criticality of this is getting all of the patients together, because then you can concentrate the efforts, the time and the focus on, on the patients all in one location, rather than the teams commuting between, between different wards. And the build plans will get us into that place by two, 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 two components. Firstly, by having both, both the hyperacute and acute part of the pathway on the stroke unit, and then bringing the rehab patients off the stroke unit and having it in the, in the aligned next ward where the therapeutic care gets. So that's the So that's the route to resolving that, and obviously is linked to the build plan. In terms of the EMAS work, so as I said earlier, so I'm clinically a paramedic by background, one of the challenges that you have with stroke patients is that there are a lot of other conditions that mimic strokes but aren't necessarily strokes. In fact, we actually call them mimics. And often, you know, kind of it's a judgement call whether or not the patients are a stroke or whether they were a mimic before, and then they come into the emergency departments, and then the emergency departments have to then, you know, kind of deconstruct that. And you can see the team that is referenced in section three point two of the report goes to do some of that work and start the thrombolysis. And with the video trial with EMAS, it actually takes the team to the patient's home through a video link, and you can start to do that sifting whilst the individual is en route. So you take out the ED step. So you can see that we can get to a point where we can be doing admission direct to the unit and cut out the ED. So that kind of takes a valuable amount of time out moving forward. In terms of your point on thrombolysis, so thrombolysis is only currently licensed for paramedic use for cardiac events, it's not for neurological events, because neurological events often need another layer of diagnostic. I don't see that changing any time in the near future, and I think that there'd be probably greater risk rather than reward for doing that.
Thank you for that. I understand that. But I do find it quite worrying that there are eighteen beds in other wards that have been taken up, when we have people sitting in A and E for sometimes twelve hours, thirty hours plus. So perhaps those beds sort of are taking up beds that other people could have been admitted to the hospital. But I do understand that, and it is quite sad that we haven't got enough staff for the needs of our people. That's just my comment. Thank you.
Okay, I've got councillor Mackinson Saunders next, please.
Well, I find all this stroke stuff really scary. My mother had a really bad stroke. I've been through it all before. I won't tell you how many days she was actually in hospital, because you'd actually die. Because, but then she had C diff and you name it. My mother had everything but survived for another thirteen and a half years, so something went right. It does concern me about getting, yet again, I'm gonna have to fly the flag for the East Coast, even to get to Lincoln, like you say, it's a long way from Grantham, it's a long way from the East Coast and so forth. And it's really important that the ambulance service can do certain things, but you've worried me even more now, you're talking about mimicking. I'll tell you, last weekend on Friday, an eighty-two-year-old dementia sufferer from Louth had a stroke. She was taken to Grimsby Hospital, and this is where we get all this problem about boundaries and Lincolnshire and all the rest of it. She was taken to Grimsby Hospital, who then transferred her to Scunthorpe. On Sunday, they decided that her bed was necessary and she was taken to Grimsby. This is a lady suffering from dementia. And we're carting people around the countryside at vast expense and all the rest of it. Scunthorpe is forty-something miles away from Lough, from where she went. And when you've got dementia, you need extra special care, don't you? So stroke care is just so important, because we're an elderly population and there are going to be more and more, well, actually, lots of younger people have strokes these days as well, don't they? The prevention is better than the cure, I understand that, but I think we've still got a long way to go, and it really, really does concern me. And it actually frightens me, having watched my mother with it and be paralysed down one side, you know, it's just such an unpleasant thing to happen to you in your later life. So please, please work hard and get a really good solution for Lincolnshire, because we don't want to be going to Nottingham.
Okay, thank you. I have councillor Cleaver next, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I note that the move to Lincoln was brought forward and took place in September twenty-three, and yet this CLEAR project has only effectively been kicked off eighteen months later. I wonder why the delay? Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. So if I refer you to section seven of the report, so actually, the CLEAR project is not the only piece of work, so it's just the next part of the work. So it wasn't that CLEAR was the only thing that we did, and therefore we delayed it for eighteen months. We've been doing work with the NHS Select Quality Improvement Programme, we've done work with the Stroke Quality Review as well, and also some work with, obviously, East Midlands Partners too. And those are the interventions that, where you see some of the improvements in section three point two and section six of there. You're absolutely right, though, that the CLEAR project is probably the central pillar of the next layer of improvements that we need to do. But we actually recognise that and bid for that intervention. It's a national project and bid for it, and then got allocated this slot as well. So it's not like we've waited to get to that point, that we've just picked this up on the kind of the improvement part of the journey. And if I may, Chair, just the comment from the previous councillor about the, both not only the geographical components of stroke care, but also the interdependencies with the other care as well. So one of the pieces of work we're doing as the group, and I'd welcome the opportunity once we've kind of got the next round of the strategy drafts to come and talk to you about, is how we're gonna start moving the focus of our acute services into the community. So we start to do that prevention, rather than waiting for deterioration. And one of the really big services that helps with prevention of stroke is diabetes care. So really focusing on our diabetes work as the next step. But completely recognise that getting the pathways right, so we are getting the patient treated in a seamless pathway, rather than moving around different parts of the geography.
Councillor Cleaver, would you like to come back?
I was just going to say, the impression I get is that this isn't about improvement, this is about firefighting.
Yeah, thank you. I've got councillor Kendrick next, please.
Thank you, Chairman. On page thirty-five, under thrombectomy, I notice there's a reference to the introduction of artificial intelligence to help identification of potential candidates for this procedure. Is this an innovation here, or are we catching up with the rest of the country in terms of this use of AI?
Yeah, thank you. Thanks for your question. And actually, as a previous councillor said, I can speak from personal experience here. So my father at home actually went in with a stroke and was a potential candidate for thrombectomy, but the intervention and the diagnosis wasn't done quick enough and therefore defaulted to thrombolysis instead. So actually, early identification, rapid identification, and then getting into a kind of a potential thrombectomy status is one of those time-critical interventions. AI being considered for this is not a Lincoln-only initiative, it's being tested as opportunities in multiple sites across the country. We're just in some of those sites to look at these opportunities. And AI actually is being looked at for a large swath of diagnostics for imaging, for MRI scans, for CT scans, not just associated with stroke as well. So we are hopeful that this will further improve our treatment, but it's not exclusive to Lincolnshire.
Thanks.
Thank you. Do I have any further questions? No, I have one myself. Is the capital funding of six and a half million for the new stroke unit at Lincoln County secure in the sense that it is not going to be withdrawn or allocated to another scheme?
Thanks, Chair. So the six point five million is in our capital plan for next year, and it's our intention to spend that money. I can't tell you whether or not the capital programme will change, because we're in the throes of the planning round for twenty-five, twenty-six at the minute. So as you know, we pre-allocate our capital plans and then we get the resources for it. But subject to us getting the allocation that we require and haven't got confirmation or denial of that yet, that six point five is secure in our programme.
Okay, thank you. I'm gonna now move to a proposal, that the presenter be thanked for his report and attendance at this meeting. Secondly, that the committee's support for the planned improvements be recorded, but at the same time, there are concerns that some of the ambitions in Lincolnshire's acute services review, such as improved recruitment and retention, have not been realised. This hasn't delivered the improvements expected or were brought forward to this committee, and I think can only be best described as being in a very fragile state. Therefore, I request that we bring another report to this committee within six months, so around September time, to see what improvements, if any, have been made. Do I have a second to my proposal? Thank you, councillor Cleaver. All those in favour, please show. Thank you, that's supported unanimously. And once again, thank you to our presenter.
Thanks, Chair.
We'll now move on to agenda item seven, Director of Public Health's annual report for integrated care close to home, creating healthy communities in Lincolnshire. This item was circulated as part of the agenda pack on pages forty-five to one hundred and four. Each year, the Director of Public Health is required to prepare a report, and I would like to hand over to Derek and thank him for coming in advance of where he was scheduled. So if you'd like to present the report in about five to ten minutes and take questions at the end, thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Macy, I'll run through the key points, I guess, from my perspective, and then happy to have a conversation afterwards. As scrutiny are fully aware, the Director of Public Health is a statutory post, has a responsibility to write an annual report, and the councillor has a responsibility to publish it. That process has already gone through health and adult care, sorry, adult care and community wellbeing scrutiny, and then through the executive, but always useful to have a conversation here as well about the report. Whilst it is my report, I've got to pass on my thanks to the whole team, particularly Rebecca, Ben and Tony for doing the heavy lifting on a lot of the report. And I'm sure members of scrutiny will recognise some of the contents as building on previous annual reports, most notably last year's report that talked about the aging population. And actually picking up on Darren and some of the conversations that the group are going through in terms of trying to move some care that historically and traditionally is based in the hospitals out into the community. I think the annual report's quite timely in that sense, and there are some other policy documents that we might talk about, in terms of meeting the needs of an aging population. So the report talks about the aging population, as you're all fully aware. We've got about one hundred and eighty thousand people in the county over sixty-five at the moment, but that's going to increase by more than forty percent. And what we expect to see is almost a doubling of our over eighty-five population over the next twenty years. So we start with an older population, and that older population is developing faster than the rest of the country as well. Really important, and I said this last year, to recognise that's a good thing. The fact that we have more older people because people are living longer into old age is a real positive. It's a reflection of all the work we've done from a public health perspective as a system and all of the NHS interventions as well. The challenge is that whilst people are living to an older age, they are living longer with multiple conditions. We need to stop them getting those multiple conditions in the first place, really important in terms of the prevention, but equally, we need to recognise that we have to deliver our services very differently to deal with that population. Our older population and the multimorbidities that they are dealing with today are very different to the population in nineteen fifty, just after the NHS was set up. And the report argues that whilst the NHS has evolved, it hasn't really systematically changed to support what have been quite fundamental changes in the population, as I came in at the end of the conversation about stroke pathway, for example. Where you live matters. Again, I won't go over this, because we talked about it last year, in terms of where populations are, particular older populations, and where the current acute services are based don't match. So we need to change how we deliver health and care so it does match, because we know our older population, especially those individuals with multiple conditions and who are frail are the ones who need the most proactive support. And generally, people with one or two conditions who are working age need reactive support, but they want it quickly and in a different way. And that's what the report talks about. I'll jump forwards a little bit, just to pick up that, and again, came in at the end of the conversation, but how we fund the health service nationally, not just in Lincolnshire, generally focuses on the acute hospital end, as you'll all be fully aware. So we do have a diagram in there that in Lincolnshire, between twenty-three and twenty-four, we had four hundred and twenty thousand emergency cases, we had one hundred and twenty-five thousand elective cases across the county, so about five fifty thousand, and we had twenty-one million GP encounters. Now, that GP encounters can be, the GP's put some information on your record, so it's not necessarily a face-to-face contact, but it just shows the quantum. So between comparison of five fifty pieces of activity in the acute sector compared to twenty-one million in general practice, we spent over that period seven hundred and eighty-five million on the acute sector and three hundred and two million on primary care, so less than half on primary care. That model, whether it's a primary care, community care, or some of the things that Darren was talking about, taking some of the services that are funded, that are based in the acute hospitals and bringing them out into the community, that needs to shift. We need to change that model. There is an argument that this is too complicated, too difficult, we don't know what to do. We address that in the report. I don't agree with that at all. I think we do know what to do. It is difficult, it is challenging, and there's a lot of entrenched behaviours and activity that we've got to move on from. But fundamentally, the health and care system is there to meet the needs of the people of Lincolnshire. As the needs of the people of Lincolnshire have changed, we haven't changed the health and care system as quickly. And we need to do that, that's absolutely where we are. How do we do that? If you don't remember anything else, take away these three points would be my suggestion. We've got three key pillars on which we need to build if we are going to change the health and care system, within the financial envelope or near enough that we've got at the moment. Firstly, Director of Public Health, I would say this, we've got to prioritise prevention, not just stopping people getting sick in the first place, but of course, that's the most important thing. We have to help people who already have conditions manage those conditions better, access services better, so that those conditions don't deteriorate, or if they are going to deteriorate, they will deteriorate more slowly. Secondly, we've got to streamline access to services, we were talking about, oh, screening, we were talking about that just before around stroke. And we've got to shift towards using technology where it's appropriate and it creates capacity and capability. Roughly half of the population would be quite happy in Lincolnshire to have a consultation online for a reactive sort of condition. If we do that, we can get through a lot more consultations, and that creates face-to-face time with GPs or nurses, where continuity of care is really important for people. So technology's going to be vital. And finally, we need to do all of this by using multidisciplinary teams. We need to get away from organisational boundaries, we need to get away from funding boundaries. This is social care, this is general practice, this is community care, and just focus on the population need and the individual need and wrap a team around that individual. How we do that when we're not going to get any more money is by using those two other areas, stopping people getting sick and helping them to manage it better, and shifting and using more technology, that creates capacity within the existing resource. We have evidence, which we talk about in the report, that demonstrates all of that. So that's really the key messages I wanted to leave with scrutiny. We put some rec- So that's really the key messages I wanted to leave with scrutiny. We put some recommendations, happy to talk about the recommendations, but also to point out that we're actually doing a lot of this already. Darren's just described some of the work that's going on in the in the group. We're working very closely with the Primary Care Network Alliance in terms of the work that they should do. And I'm working very closely and leading on a programme across the system called Community and Primary Prevention, which is which is about trying to change the models that we deliver, through which we deliver health and care at a local level. I'll pause there.
Okay, thank you. We've got councillor Smith first, please.
Thank you, chairman. And with your indulgence, I do have three three points. Before I begin my questions, I'd just like to say thank you again, Derek, for answering my very long email, which is before this meeting, which I is appreciated. And in part, my first point, I actually mentioned in my email, but what I will mention in that to you and to the committee chairman is, is it not time that we chain or seek to change how deprivation is calculated? Because to my mind, chairman, the way it is currently calculated, it prevents a false narrative or presents, excuse me, a false narrative with respect to Lincolnshire because there are vast, vast swathes of areas that, when you look at the data, always no deprivation, it's average. And actually, when you actually speak to people on the ground, there is actually quite a lot of deprivation that's hidden that you don't see because we live in a rural area, because there's no transport, you have to travel somewhere, and it costs you more to get health care outcomes. So is that not a conversation we need to have on a health basis and indeed a local government basis? Because at the minute, the deprivation metrics to my mind, chairman, are skewed and are adversely affecting our residents. Secondly, chairman, I note on page 62, it states, excuse me, that, and I quote, "More than half of Lincolnshire's population are classified as high need or having long-term conditions that require comprehensive support. Over the last five years, the number of patients presenting to care with long-term conditions increased by 11%, while the number of patients with high-complexity conditions nearly doubled, 91%. Providing care to these groups costs over £1 billion in Lincolnshire over the last year alone", close quote. How many more are there that we don't know about? And I use myself as an example, chairman, because without my willingness to fight the system in Lincolnshire at the time, I would not be currently under the specialist I am under Nottingham, and I would have been left in quite significant pain due to a long-term condition. So how many of those numbers, chairman, are we not seeing? Because they're not well enough and don't know how to fight, how to argue a case, so they actually get the support they need. And thirdly, chairman, if we're not careful, there is a real risk, as the report states in the documentation within it, that we will continue to see a shift rather than our residents going to primary care. What you will actually see, chairman, is again something that happened to myself during Covid, where you think, oh, it will pass at first, so you don't see anybody, you then leave it, you then can't get an appointment. Obviously, Covid was an exceptional time, but even now, it is very difficult to get an appointment, and you become unable or feel unable to properly access primary and secondary care, some due to travel costs, some due to the sheer fact of being unable to actually get an appointment to do so. So we will have a risk of self-diagnosis through things like, and I'll use American WebMD, which is becoming exceedingly popular, and much like where, for a number of years in Lincolnshire, we saw cases of horrific DIY dentistry. Are we actually not getting very close to the stage, chairman, where you will start seeing DIY fixes for much more complex medical conditions, and then they will go, oh, that's not worked, I need to go to A&amp;E? So we're actually perpetuating the problem we already have of primary care not being sufficiently resourced. But then when commissioners come and look at the budget, they'll go, but you're not seeing people, they're turning up to the hospital in A&amp;E, so A&amp;E needs more money. And finally, chairman, I will make one very brief point, which is on page thirty six, sorry, seventy six, excuse me. Could the system handle the additional number of screenings if such a programme was implemented, chairman? Because personally, I don't think, whilst the programme is, the principle of the programme is fantastic, and we absolutely should support that, chairman, I don't think the system would be able to handle that level of screening should the take-up increase to that level. Thank you, chairman.
Thank you. I'm gonna, I'm gonna go the wrong way around there, because I think I think the last two points are really closely aligned. Can the system deal with an increase in screening numbers? Absolutely, yes, we have to make sure we can, because that then feeds into the previous question, councillor Smith, around how do we deal with delayed diagnostics? If we don't screen early, we then pick up disease later, treatment outcomes are much poorer for the individual and their family, and it costs far more. So it's not a can we, we must, and we will. I genuinely think we will. Having been responsible for vaccination, immunisation and screening in a previous life when I worked in the NHS as a director of public health, there's lots of things we can and we should do. And we are working very closely with the Integrated Care Board as they prepare to take on responsibility because it will go to the ICB, we expect anyway, over the next couple of years. And we've already done a huge amount of work around vaccination, immunisation, which I think we've already brought here to scrutiny. So absolutely agree with the point about delayed diagnostics, delayed admission, people delaying their treatment causes huge negative outcomes. But that really plays into the whole point of the the report, which is, we need to fundamentally change how we build the system. In terms of complexity, I think that that is part of the point. How do you do that? The Integrated Care Board for Lincolnshire, three-quarters of a million people, their budget for 25, 26, when you add it all together, is going to be roughly £2,100 million, 2.1 billion. So the idea that we haven't got enough money for the three-quarters of a million people, I think, is questionable. And that's excluding the 350, 400,000, 400 million that we spend on adult social care. So certainly, two and a half billion, I would say, is not far off what what we are currently spending in terms of health and care in Lincolnshire. So the idea that there's not enough money is questionable. I mean, certainly, capital spend, I think, is, there's an argument to be made, we need more capital. How we spend it needs to change. But of course, the problem with that is, how do you change spend when it's all being spent dealing with problems coming in through the door? ounce of prevention's worth a pound of cure. But when you've got to spend all your pounds on cure because people are sick, it's really quite difficult. The report tries to demonstrate, and hopefully everybody's had a chance to look, models from other parts of the world that have demonstrated impact, that will create a 2%, 3% change in that two and a half billion? Because that a 2% or 3% change in two and a half billion is a lot of money, and then creates the opportunity to do things differently, that then create the opportunity to keep doing things differently. We're seeing that already with technology-enabled prevention and care pilot that we're carrying out within the council for people who are in receipt of adult social care. That is demonstrating really good benefits, both for the individual and their families, but also in terms of reducing the cost of packages of care. So it's a win-win-win. We need to create space to do more and more of that. So I think we can do that. And then finally, deprivation calculation point, absolutely agree, I've been banging on about this for the past eight or nine years. There is a lack of sophistication in the national rocker model, which is how money gets through to the NHS, and it is skewed to urban deprivation, not rural and coastal deprivation. We have been working on that, and there was an index of rural deprivation proposed, but it hasn't been taken up yet by the council, by the government. We'll continue to push to get that balance right. Of course, every place is going to say we're special because, completely understand that, that's our job. But in terms of Lincolnshire, and we reported this a couple of director of public health reports ago, the aging population, the deprivation, and the rural and coastal communities all combined to really drive cost, and that's not recognised in the national funding model.
Thank you for your indulgence, chairman. It's a very, very brief point. With things like screening going over to the ICB, do you foresee, Derek, that that will actually provide an improvement in service and outcomes? Because it's decentralised. And thank you, chairman.
Yes, absolutely. And although I have no direct responsibility, we are working really, really closely with our NHS colleagues. And I think it's one of the real benefits in Lincolnshire, because we cover the same geography as the Integrated Care Board as compared to other places. We work hand in glove with our NHS colleagues, with the medical directors likely to be responsible for this sort of area. And we've already done that around vaccination, immunisation, and we'll continue to push because ultimately, the health and wellbeing in the population is everybody's business.
Okay, thank you. Councillor Martin, next, please.
Hi there. It's just an observation, really, to do with prevention across the county. With the new housing allocations due for Lincolnshire, we're looking at 30% increase in population. So it's going to be a vast increase over the next 20 years. And obviously, with new housing comes section 106 agreements, where you get more money, blah, 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 for healthcare. I've seen situations where, I mean, for instance, in Grantham, we have a developer who, they've allocated £858,000 towards a new health centre. And when I talked to them, they say, well, the NHS doesn't want it, they've told us it's not needed on this area, but although we don't, so from their viewpoint, they seem to think it's not going to happen. That's a lot of cash to basically be sitting somewhere, they're not sure, but the developer really doesn't think they're going to use it. They're actually allocated land to build this health centre, and it's just going to sit there. At the same time, we have leisure services, which are taking on GP-referred patients to try and improve their health and suchlike, the GP referral programme, which, Born Leisure Centre down there in South Stephen is, they're loving this programme, they're getting lots of people in, and the long-term effect is they do their 12-week course, and then they stay on members of the, members of the gym and the fitness clubs and suchlike. It's brilliant, it's working very well. But we also have leisure services that haven't got facilities to actually do that programme, which I believe is Stamford Leisure Centre. So the question is, it's a very round houses kind of thing, but given the vast growth of population that's coming our way, are we looking at sort of prevention programmes which will take developers' monies like this 858,000 at sitting waiting for something to happen? Talking to local councils and saying, can we do something with this as a extension to leisure services and to try and actually develop the towns and areas for facilities to prevent the health issues, you know, from obesity and weight gain and suchlike? Because at the moment, I'm not seeing it. And it would be useful if we could use that kind of housing development to power the improvements in health, rather than prevention, as prevention, sorry. Thank you.
I'll have a crack at entering that, or at least articulating some of the the work that we're doing collectively. As I'm sure you'll know, the Health and Wellbeing Board and the Health and Wellbeing Strategy have a specific priority, which is quite unusual across the country, around housing. So we have the Housing, Health and Aging Well Delivery Board that's chaired by councillor Bowkit, to try to connect up. Now, we've got seven districts, one county, we've got 13 primary care networks, Primary Care Network Alliance, Integrated Care Board. It is a complex landscape. Local government reorganisation may make that easier, may make it more complex, who knows? We will see. But I think the the point about how do we connect up these services at a local level is absolutely vital, completely agree. There's been a document that was produced two weeks ago from from the government, which is called Neighbourhood Health, and we understand that will be one of the key tenants of the 10-year plan, which I'm sure we'll talk about here. And it is about how do you shift health and care to a local level? They haven't defined that yet. I would expect we're probably talking 80 to 120,000 population geography. How do you shift services from an NHS and social care perspective? And how do you intervene earlier? And everything that you've just articulated, councillor Martin, covers that. Because if we can capture people who've got hypertension or high blood pressure, high cholesterol, we put them on the relevant medication, but we also refer into physical activity, diet and nutrition, and support them to lose weight and change their diet, then that's going to avoid or at least delay significantly some of some of the other conditions that we've talked about. And we've got a lot of the capacity and capability there already. And where we haven't, whether it's 850,000 from a developer or it's 2,100 million that the NHS receives, there is money in the system, we just need the ability to use it differently. And I don't know whether you've had a report about the planning guidance for the NHS yet. That has changed quite significantly and is looking to offer more flexibility locally. So hopefully, that that will start to open up these opportunities. Final thing I say is, as a council, we invest in, and the executive have approved, to go out to recommission our Integrated Lifestyle Service, One U Lincolnshire, which very much does do what we're talking about, is picking people up, supporting them to stop smoke, to lose weight, to increase their physical activity, and treat the person rather than the conditions. And we're looking to expand that and tie it into some of these wider networks. And that that's just starting to be recommissioned. So happy to bring that back once we we've got to that point.
Happy councillor Martin, thank you. I've got councillor Allen next, please.
Thank you, chairman. The the report was very, very useful, I thought. And the optimism it contains, I think, is is really, really good as well. I, and it's very refreshing to hear somebody in the health sector say there's enough money in the system to do what should be done, as opposed to perpetually saying it's just a simply, it's just simply a question of throwing more money at the NHS. The the, my comments, the other thing I notice in in your report is that you say frequently that we are living longer, although my understanding is that life expectancy in the UK has been falling for some time. You can come back on that, but I've seen statistics that suggest that. And indeed, our life expectancy in sort of in the European League is falling down that league as well. I hope we're not going to have an argument about that, but we'll see.
Could I just jump, just to, the issue there is that life expectancy is still going up. The rate at which it increases is decreasing. So instead of going up by one year every four years in the UK, the recent Lancet paper, which I think you're referring to, suggests it's, it goes up one year every six years. So it's, we're still increasing overall life expectancy in in England and the UK and European countries, but it's not going up as quickly as it was pre-Covid. And we are at the bottom of the pile from European countries in terms of the speed with which with which it's going up. So it's a nuance, but it is still getting better. It's just not getting better as fast as it will.
Well, I think if I do accept your figures, it does suggest that something is going astray, even if life expectancy isn't increasing as much as it should be or used to do. So you know, taking that against the issues in terms of everything else and the money that's been put into the system, perhaps you're quite right in saying it really requires a review of how we go about doing things. And I say these comments against a background of initiatives that I've heard about over the past four years, and indeed, at this particular committee meeting as well, because we don't seem to be, we don't seem to have difficulty with coming forward with initiatives and initiatives on initiatives and initiatives before we even know what the outcome of the first initiative is almost. And in some cases, in a very narrow area, they can show some significant improvements. But in lots of cases, when you look at it as a whole, in terms of what was trying to be improved, it does become very questionable about whether those benefits are actually there for the public, for the community, may well be there for the actual service provider, but not necessarily for ourselves. The 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 prevention side of things, again, we've covered that, touched upon that today in terms of the NHS dentistry side of things. It is something that I don't see rarely takes place in the NHS at all. My, the NHS, to me, seems to be totally reactive. It waits for something to go wrong, and then it tries to sort it out. It doesn't try and prevent it. It is solely reactive, and it becomes more and more difficult to actually sort that out, the longer and longer you leave the problem to actually occur and develop. So finding that way of getting into the prioritising prevention seems to me to be quite difficult. Yes, you can tell somebody to lose weight, but what we ought to be saying is, how do we stop people putting weight on in the first place? Yes, you can tell somebody to lose weight, but what we ought to be saying is, how do we stop people putting weight on in the first place? And all those things are very, very difficult until you get to the stage where you say, we're not going to operate on you until you've lost ten stone or whatever it is, which is a very good way of dealing with the issues to a great extent, I suppose. But not particularly... It's not particularly good for the individual concern. The overall, I'm leading up to one question for you, Derek, which is, your report comes out and it, to a certain extent, ought to be the sort of thing that looks, you know, overall in terms of what is happening across the county, in terms of our populations. And indeed tries to steer or at least look at results and then say, you know, that is sort of working, that is not working. There needs to be more money spent in that area or spent in that part of the population or whatever it is. Or more resources, not necessarily money. But I don't see any metrics in here that says, you know, how your reports are providing the improvements that you're looking towards. And that would be very useful to me if there was something there that says the metrics we use, we are going to use to guide, shall we say, the overall resources that are used in the county to improve our wellbeing of the communities are these. And, you know, it's up to everybody then to actually input to those so that we can see that there are some overall improvements taking place in the county in terms of the wellbeing of our communities. And I don't see that. And I dare say it's quite a difficult thing to do.
I'll pick out two things, I think. I mentioned earlier that what we have done within the report, because I think it's almost a horses for courses argument. Within the report, we're trying to create the narrative and it is optimistic and I take no... I'm a natural optimist. Some people might say that's stupidity, but I'd rather be an optimist than a pessimist. Because I think that's how you win hearts and minds and how we can change the system. And what we've done is we've taken some of those models like the community health workers from Brazil and we said, if we did this in Lincolnshire, what would it mean? And that's in the report. So we would avoid 723 deaths from cardiovascular disease if we use that sort of model. If we would increase our screening rates, coming back to councillor Smith's point, by 82%, meaning another 71,000 screens for breast cancer, for example. Only a very small proportion would prove positive, but we would be intervening earlier. That for me is some examples of where if we take learning from elsewhere and apply it into Lincolnshire, then we are going to see better outcomes. In terms of the detailed analysis, there's also a diagram that talks about providing personalised pathways of care. Lots of different colours and it talks about generally healthy, acute episodic, long term conditions, long term conditions that are more complex and then end of life care. That's based on some work that we've been doing with the NHS for the past three or four years around population health management. That really gets into the, I think, the detail that you were talking about in terms of the differences in place. In some parts of Lincolnshire, the majority of the population are younger, so Lincoln City being a good example. Generally healthy or acute episodic. And all the evidence suggests that as long as those people are registered, then quick intervention, potentially online, is what they prefer and it's the best, most effective way to deal with those individuals. Other parts of the county, down the coast, Mablethorpe for example, lots of people with multiple long term conditions and complexity. We need to create capacity for continuity of care with clinicians there. And that might mean shifting some clinicians from Lincoln over to the coast. That's quite a challenging thing to do, but that's what we're going to need to do because that's where the need is. And it comes back to what Darren was talking about, the group model. It comes back to the work that we do with Primary Care Networks, comes back to the email councillor Smith sent me about the model of general practice. Is it fit for purpose? Can we carry on with the model that we've got? It might be fit for purpose in the middle of Lincoln. Highly questionable about whether it's going to survive because we can't recruit GPs down the coast. So we have to do things differently. And I think the aim of the report is to try to demonstrate this isn't impossible. Lots of other places that have done this around the world. We need to, through incremental change, but quick incremental change, start to shift that care model.
If there's a question, I can bring you back councillor Allen.
I dare say you may be right in terms of ensuring that the money that seems to be enough is spent in a better way to achieve those sort of outcomes. There's two things though, you know, does the NHS have the capacity? Because it seems to be at the moment, you know, buried in its own problems. Its current problems, shall we say, in terms of how it goes about delivery. Does it have the actual capacity, never mind the willpower, to actually look at the sort of things that you're talking about and seeing if there are better models that could be used to deliver services? Or is it so embedded in the system that's been operating for the past, whatever it is, 50 or 60 years? More now, 70 years? That it can't actually see what the problem is and never mind react to the change that's required, going to be required to actually do what you're suggesting?
I can't answer for the NHS because obviously I'm not the NHS, but I can give you my opinion. My opinion is that it is changing, that the challenges that the NHS face are challenges that we all face because the NHS is ours and therefore we need to push for those changes. I think the general direction of travel is positive. I think the local direction of travel is very positive. So the work that we are doing around community primary partnerships with our GP practices, with our community trusts, which are part of the group now, is really positive. It's, can we do it fast enough at scale to mean that we can sustain the level of care that we've got and then improve it? And again, I would say yes, because I'm an optimist and I think we've got examples of where we can adopt from elsewhere. We are already doing a lot of this work. So yeah, I think we can.
Okay, thank you. councillor Cleaver.
Thank you. And thank you, Mr Ward. It's always a joy to have you present to this committee because you always talk such common sense in clear English with great clarity. Thank you. Just picking up on councillor Martin's point about S106s. You've raised a question there. The changes that you mentioned that are being considered, does that allow once... Because at the moment, S106s are only allowed for primary care and only allowed for capital. And obviously there's a limitation that we can't use them to build urgent treatment centres, for example, or diagnostic centres. Is that going to change? That's my first question. And then moving to the recommendations. Two things I noticed that stand out for me personally. Harnessing digital technology, recommendation three. And the multidisciplinary teams and integration of care in at number four. In terms of the greater use of IT and digital technology, I mean, this has been spoken of many, many times. I know that many more forward thinking GP practices have very much tried to have their patients accept the use of technology and frankly have failed. So I wonder what we can do to actually overcome that. Because I absolutely like what you're saying here. I just hope that we can do it and we can come up with some innovative ways to make people less resistant to using technology or learning how to, even resistant to learning how to use technology. And then the whole point about integrated care, we've had an integrated care board for what, three years now? Is it three years? And to be honest, I've not seen a lot of evidence of integration and I've yet to see the benefits of it. Indeed, I could actually argue, I think, that the head of steam that there was for integration, greater integration, has actually dissipated. That we're not seeing any great forceful movement to take it further. Patients don't understand the role of primary care networks. They see them just as another layer in the system. They don't see those as helping integration. They don't see the pathways being clearer. So, I mean, it's lovely to hear this and have it reiterated. My concern is, do we have the tools to make this 2% of, 2% of 1, of 2 billion move to make this happen? Thank you.
Thank you. In terms of the housing allocation funding pots, clearly that's a national planning guidance issue. I would suggest that the people in this room are perfectly placed to advocate for that through political lines. Because regardless of the political party, it just makes sense. And the more local councillors and local MPs are feeding that into central offices and then into government, the better would be my view. Because I absolutely agree with you, it doesn't... The issue with having money, even £850,000 for a capital spend billed for a GP practice or some other health facility is the revenue costs that then go with that. And those revenue costs have to come out of the ICB budget and they'll say, we haven't got the money because we've already got this practice or that practice. If actually that money could be spent towards another community diagnostic centre where there isn't any and that could be added to and there is the flexibility, then that may well be of much better use if that's informed by what the local need is. So absolutely, but not at the moment. But please, 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 push through your roots to try to give us that flexibility around planning. That leads me into the second bit around technology. Technology for me isn't just about using the NHS app, although I think that's a really good example of where it can be adopted. Of course, there's some people where it's not appropriate and they shouldn't be using it. But the NHS app has twice as many, more than twice as many subscribers as Netflix. In some parts of the county, you can book your appointments, you can see your results and that, all through the app. And that obviously reduces the interaction with the GP practice, which frees them up to do other things. And you get those results immediately. So there's lots of opportunity. That capacity can then be used elsewhere. So I do think, you start to add those things up, there are big opportunities. But digital technology is also about how we can help ourselves, you know, what's the role of technology? If we've got a loved one who's getting older, who's maybe at risk of a fall and isn't connected. How can we, as family members, support each other to have that technology? And we're doing work on that. And how do we use digital information better? So we can understand the needs of the population and start to change the service delivery model based on that. I talked about population health management, that's a really good example of that. And we have that profile right down to GP practice level and we're working with GP practices to say, why are you doing this when there's very little need? And you're not doing this when there's a huge amount of need. And practices are starting to change how they staff their practice because of that. So there's lots of examples. The big challenge, and I agree with you, is that it's hard work on top of the day job, on top of coming out of COVID, on top of everything else. And whilst there's a lot of money overall in the system, there isn't a huge amount of capacity and Lincolnshire always struggles to recruit and retain staff. So there's lots of competing challenges. We're just going to keep going. We're just going to put our shoulders to the wheel and keep going.
Thank you. I'll just remind the committee, we did of course already write to the Secretary of State and raised our concerns with section 106 and so on. And they did say they'd be taking it on board to hopefully that's part of what's going to roll out, so with any luck. Any other questions? Yeah, councillor Mackinson Saunders and then councillor Walthby, please.
Well, thank you. It is nice to read something that's optimistic, even if it's a man in a grey suit. But it's really, it's really... You know, and it's, I'm even more gratified to hear you say, we need to move things to the East Coast. It's important that we have things closer to home. We really feel isolated and we do feel like we're second best. So I think it's really good that we're hearing some good news stories. It's really sad to, I can't remember in my youth, there were quite so many wobbly people around. And it is talking how we get people to adjust their lifestyles. And it's really got to start when they're little and they learn to eat healthily. And there's a, in East Lindsay, we've got an Aging Better Initiative. But I think they're aiming at the wrong people. I would aim at the 25s to 40s because if you get them right and you teach them how to cook and you teach them how to have a healthier lifestyle, they'll be educating their children. Because those of us who've got old, have obviously got old for some reason. And it's probably from living, not, you know, not eating quite so many additives and all the rest of it. But it makes me really sad when you go to the leisure centre in Louth and there is a huge cabinet. So you go in, you swim and you might go on the machines and all the rest of it. And then you come out and have fizzy drinks, Mars bars and all the rest of it. And the number of times I've complained about that and I'm told I'm a miserable old whatever. And I'm also told, my grandson spilt the beans and said, we're not allowed to tell you if we have a McDonald's. And it's fast, it's fast food, isn't it? It's all these things which are meant to be progress in life, which are contributing to making us all sick, isn't it? So I was thinking about section 106s as well. It's a shame we can't use some of the money that we could go for that for having clinics for prostate testing, things like that, because that would be a good use of section 106 monies. Because often they can't find something to spend the money on that's local to the areas. I know in Louth, I've always thought, there's a complication because GPs own the practices, isn't there? But if we could actually have them all work together, put them up on the hospital site, pull all the resources, we could have a little diagnostic centre and all the rest of it. But it's the historical, it's how we got to where we are today. So there's lots of ideas we can come up with, but they're not going to be things that we can do in the next couple of years. But really good that you're being optimistic and we'll try and be optimistic with you. Thank you.
Shall I just come, a couple of quick things. Absolutely agree that we have to help people help themselves and that is one of the core themes within the report, as you'll have seen. And we have lost that to some extent. And, you know, I'll get my little violin out and say that the rate with which the public, well, the public health grants reduced by a quarter over the past 10 years as compared to the NHS budget that's gone up and up. Only with inflation, but it has gone up and up and up. So we are spending more and more on treating the problems and less and less on trying to stop them in the first place. Or helping people who've got conditions manage those conditions with evidence-based support. And I'd come back to, again, our Integrated Lifestyle Service does that. And that is part funded by the Integrated Care Board. So they are, it's half a million pounds, which out of their 2.1 billion budget is not huge, but it's half a million pounds that I think councillors elsewhere thought we wouldn't get and we've got them. So we can build on that sort of work and keep moving forwards. But that helping people to help themselves and support them with an education, advice, support service is really, really important. I think coming back to the point that as people age, that's a good thing, but then they live longer in poor health. It comes back, I think, to councillor Allen's point about the health, about life expectancy. Even if life expectancy is going up, even if it's slowing, the rate with which it's going up, healthy life expectancy is not increasing. So the amount of time that you spend in good health is decreasing. That's the problem because we all want to live a long, happy, healthy life. And then obviously everybody, death and taxes, everybody's going to die at some point. But you want to be as healthy as you can for as long as possible. That's a real shift. That's going to be really important. And in the Lancet paper that I think you were referring to, the key drivers are obesity, lack of physical activity. And it's things like those people who take no physical activity, who are completely sedentary, just going out for a walk three or four times a week for 20 minutes. Yeah, get your heart rate up a little bit, massively beneficial. And we're doing quite a lot of work with those groups of populations. We will see the benefit, but it's a juggernaut that's going to take 10, 15, 20 years to turn around.
Mr Chairman, I think there's quite a role that volunteers can play in all of this and we should be encouraging volunteers. I've got friends who run walking groups and things like that. And so if there could be a little smattering of money to help those sorts of organisations. Because you still do have quite a good, solid group of people who probably retire early and want to do things. And I think that's one way we can utilise those skills as well. And what, One Lincolnshire annoys the heck out of me because it doesn't actually say what it does. So how do people know what One Lincolnshire is about? And I think you're missing, you know, who advises them to call anything, anything as a name that doesn't say what they do? as a name that doesn't say what they do? And so I've never referred anybody and I don't know how to do it anyway, but that's a shame, isn't it? Because I'm sure they do good work.
It's One You Lincolnshire. It's One You Lincolnshire, it's national branding. So it was the National Department of Health, healthy lifestyle branding that we were, we had to use really. So it's called One You Lincolnshire. But the best thing to do, and I recognise not everybody is technologically, just Google One You Lincolnshire. If you are a smoker, you have free universal access to it. If you aren't a smoker but you have weight issues and want to lose weight, you want to increase your physical activity, a whole range of other things, there's a website for just the general population can go on and get lots of advice and support. And if you meet certain criteria, you'll get face-to-face support as well. So anybody listening, anybody in the room, just Google One You Lincolnshire, you'll see the range of offers that they have.
Thank you. Councillor Welbury.
Thank you, Chair. Great report and very plain speaking and I think we can all sign up for it. Just aside to what you said, I went to Boston Pilgrim, had to wait in A and E for rather a long time and were offered a white bread sandwich with processed meat and cheese in it, you know, if you were a patient waiting. And we, me and my son, who I was with, we just laughed. He said, is this really the way to go? When you're waiting to be treated? That was just an aside. No, I just wanted to bring something to the committee about 106 monies that I'm dealing with at the moment. Quite a worrying change since the government policy has changed. As we all know, the house building is moving on a pace, where I'm finding in Boston area that a lot of the developers are refusing to pay any 106 monies now, that they will not pay for any health services and they won't pay for any extra roads or education. I'm working with the chief planning officer on two developments at the moment, where experts have been involved with looking at the developers' finances, which is being funded by the developers. And I just think the way that things are going, that is going to be more and more the case. So it won't be a case of where do we spend the money? It will be a case of there isn't any money and where do all the people that will be moving into the areas, where are their services going to come from? We are creating modern-day slums. We really are creating modern-day slums. So I just wanted to share that. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I don't think really you can come back on that. It's a statement of where we are. Again, it is something that we addressed, so in the letter that we sent and we did sort of cover over that. And in reality, we did have a very positive response back and that it would be looked at, so Derek, I don't know if you want to say anything at all?
I've heard exactly the same, obviously not planning officer, I haven't got that background, but I think we've got to think very carefully as a country and then through our elected members about the neighbourhoods we want to build. Because the healthier the environment, the healthier the people in it. And it comes back to the point about if we can, if we can create environments that have good access to green space and Lincolnshire has fabulous access to green space, to blue space, you know, our rivers, our coastal strip, we've got all of the ingredients, but we're just going to make sure that we build our housing settlements in a way that allows children, young people to run, play games, that allows us to use active travel to cycle, to walk, completely accept you're not going to do a journey from Boston to Mablethorpe on your, well, some people will, but I wouldn't, on your bike, but local, smaller trips, the more we can build our communities where you can walk if it's less than a mile and you can cycle if it's less than five miles. That's really important and obviously councillors in the room, especially those councillors who are district councillors as well and have that interface with the planning authority, vital, absolutely vital. That is the very definition of upstream prevention, because it stops or it helps people reduce their risk of being sedentary, helps them maintain a healthy weight without them even thinking. Absolutely agree. And, you know, planning applications for fast food outlets, there's a whole range of things that we could go through.
Okay, thank you. I've got a few questions and I'm going to close down the debate because I think we've all had plenty of opportunity to speak. So my first question is, reflecting back to last year's report, can you expand on how many of the recommendations in the report were rolled out by the NHS colleagues and how are these measured? And in turn, in this year's report, is this likely to be supported in the same manner?
We've got a separate report actually, which we haven't brought here, that I'd be happy to bring forwards about the recommendations from last year, where we are against those recommendations. And then again, we could very happily do the same in a year's time with the recommendations from this report if that would help.
That'd be hugely helpful, thank you.
Yeah, we'd be happy to come along and do that.
Brilliant. Okay. And my next question is, and I think you've alluded to some of this, so can you please advise what conversations have taken place with either GPs or the primary care networks as a whole to encourage them to trial strategies such as the foundry healthcare model and what response has been received?
So I mentioned community and primary partnerships, which is very much an NHS-focused programme that I've been asked to lead by the chief executive of the Integrated Care Board and Debbie, our chief exec in the council. And that is very much about how do we do things differently at a very local level? And those examples, we've, again, we've got separate paper and a separate presentation and be happy to come and talk to scrutiny about in terms of, I guess that's where a lot of my optimism comes, GPs want to do a good job. Everybody who works in general practice wants to do a good job. The vast majority of people who work in health and care want to do a good job. It's the external pressures and the lack of ability to try different things. We are starting to see some quite significant shifts in how, not every general practice by a long shot, but how in some areas, health and care services are being changed to deliver differently. And very happy with Tony McGinty, who's consultant in public health in my team, who probably know, he's leading a lot of that work. We come along and go through some of the examples there and how we're building on those examples. To then take it a step up, so they're very practical, local examples within that tactical move to try and change how we deliver services. To take it up to a Lincolnshire level, I mentioned neighbourhood health as one of the national priorities. If you add what we're doing around community and primary partnerships with what the Primary Care Network Alliance is doing, with what the ICB are doing with some national pilot work that I think might have been to scrutiny about different funding models for primary care and along with what Darren's doing in the group, and you put all of that together, it's actually quite a lot of significant work to start to shift care away from the acute sector. And we're just starting to pull that together to describe the totality in Lincolnshire. It's a start, you know, it's the end of the beginning, not anymore. But we can build on it and I think we're in a different place to a lot of other places in terms of that work that we're doing collectively. So again, there's probably three papers there to come forwards, to get into a little bit of detail, but some real tangible examples around community and primary partnerships. I'd start there and maybe build on it.
My next question is, with the government's proposed shift towards prevention and chapter five reflecting this, is there any evidence to date of the government beginning to fund this shift in the coming financial year?
Yes. So the public health grant allocation has just been announced. For Lincolnshire, our allocation's gone up by about 2 million pounds, so from 37 to 39 million. Unfortunately, when you factor in inflation, pay awards, et cetera, that probably means maybe, well, certainly less than a million left. But there is some evidence of trying to increase the amount that's in the public health grant and that's great. And as a statutory chief officer who's got to sign off that along with section 151 officer, that's really useful. But of course, 800,000 against a 2.1 billion budget is nothing. Well, it's something, but it's not enough. If we can affect that 2% or 3% of that total spend, that's where the real opportunity is. So I guess I would argue that flexibility in the planning guidance for the NHS to do things differently is probably as important, if not more important, than an increase in the public health grant. Please, 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 more increases in the public health grant, because that's, you know, we have through councillor Boca, the opportunity to directly influence things there. But a 2% or 3% change in that 2.1, 2.5 billion pounds is going to affect a bigger change.
My final question, the report refers to a shift towards technology. To what extent do we underestimate or overestimate the abilities of elderly population to make use of technology?
So we've done a piece of academic work with the University of Lincoln on this, which we've published and we have a report on our website as well about digital inclusion. So the ability to use technology is not just about does somebody understand how to use technology, that's a really important part, but generally a lot of our older population can use technology. Do they have the kit is another key issue. And even if you've got both of those, do we have broadband or 4G, 5G connections so we can actually get online? So you need those three things and then you need the service to be available online as well from the other side. So you need to be reaching in and you need the service to be reaching out. Where you bring those two together, the evidence would suggest that a good 60, 70, 80% of older population are quite happy to use technology in that way. As I said, the NHS app, twice as many subscribers as Netflix and a lot of those subscribers are older. But clearly, technology is not the be-all and the end-all. What it can do, and we talk about in the report, is if you can create a 5% or 10% shift in GP referrals and interactions, because people do it automatically online or AI gives you the answer, that's a 5% or 10% increase in capacity that can be used elsewhere. And that's, when you think about the number of GP contacts that we talked about, that's a lot of contacts that you free up that can be used differently. That then starts to shift the change. So this is about incremental changes in very big numbers is a big number. That's where I think we are and that's why I'm optimistic.
In this, I'm going to move to a proposal that the director of public health for Lincolnshire County Council be thanked for presenting the report and that the committee fully supports the director's five recommendations on page 53 of the report for the Lincolnshire health and care system and look forward to these recommendations being taken forward in the coming year. And those other items in relation to the report are picked up on in the work programme. Do I have a second for my proposal? Thank you, councillor Mackinson-Sauders. All those in favour, please show. Thank you. That's supported unanimously and thank you very much once again for your presentation. That brings the meeting to a close in which case now, so thank you all very much for your attendance today. Thank you.